I got to use the gavel. Okay. It's very exciting, Dr. Bregge. Welcome, everyone. I want to thank you all for being here. Are people in the overflow room? Do we know that?
No. I didn't see anybody there.
No? Okay, so everyone's here. Okay. Let's see. I am going to...I think we should start with the flag salute? Correct?
That's usually where we start.
Usually where we start. Let me call on a great American to lead us in the flag salute. How's Mr. Wonderlick? Would you like to lead us? You're all great Americans. I just chose the one in the front row.
Please try and be including our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I wanted to start by asking for a moment of silence. There's two events, one close to home and one not as close to home, but dear to everyone's hearts. Dr. Bregge, I think we could cut the music, please. Is the music going? Dr. Bregge's father passed away, I believe, last week. Robert Bregge, back in Illinois where Dr. Bregge is from. And he was gone for a while. And he still kept in touch with us despite the issues he was dealing with. And I wanted just to say, we send our condolences. And I want to ask for a moment of silence in memory of...blessed memory of Robert Bregge. Also, as you know, on February 14th, we had a terrible national tragedy. We lost 17 beautiful souls in Parkland, Florida at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. And I'd like to say that some of us knew people who knew people there. So it's not that far from us. It's very close to home, and it hits very close to home here at our school district. So in memory of the 14 students and three adults, I'd like to take another moment of silence. Thank you. So we...I think we are going to first do spotlight on students, something a little joyful. Horace Mann is here. And those are the reasons we're all here. I'd like everyone to notice they have purple laptops because they're purple Huskies.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juliette Fine, and I am the principal of Horace Mann School. And we proudly present to you our students in grades three through five. And today, before I begin, I'd like to thank our teachers from Horace Mann for being here, Ms. Stratford, Mr. Siskin, and Mrs. Richardson, and also all the parents who have brought our Horace Mann students. But what you see here right now is, we have students presenting quite a few technology tools that we have had the opportunity to experience this year. As you know, the board has allowed our school to premiere technology, and each of our classrooms is equipped with $60,000 worth of technology. And our job, we know, is to use it to its capacity. And so what you see here is our children from Horace Mann are going to be introducing themselves to board members as I'm describing and narrating exactly what's happening with this interaction. And so each of our students are going to be interacting with our board members and our assistant superintendent and superintendent, and sharing with them the projects that they have created on their laptops in classrooms. What you're going to see here is what you may not see, and what they're sharing with our board members, is how they've created Google Docs, they've been using Google Slides, Sway, and also created eBooks. But I'm going to have our talented technology tosa, Mrs. Lisa Beeler, share with you what those technology tools that we've been using in the classroom to make these projects happen. And she'll be able to tell you a little bit more of that.
So what our students are presenting is a very small portion of what they're actually doing in class. We have a five-minute limit. So Ms. Conway's class, using Google Classroom, are writing poetry and illustrating their essays. They're also doing Flipgrid to present their oral presentations of their research projects. And we even have a student who's sharing their coding. In Mrs. Pierce's class, we have...oh. In Ms. Conway's class, we have Zachary, Ariana, and Trevor. Mrs. Pierce's third-grade class, we have Camille Johns and Etiya Shapiro. They're also writing informational narrative and opinion essays. They're writing poems using templates, and they're using their technology to revise and edit. Ms. Delajani's class is third grade, and Masa Black and William Meng are presenting. Through Google Classroom, they are using Nearpod and learning about life cycles. And the neat thing about Nearpod is there is a VR section where they can take a field trip to a butterfly range in Mexico. Mrs. Willis's fourth-grade class, Ezra, Sadie Grace, and Race, they all wrote and illustrated eBooks using Book Creator in Chrome. And their book is about the California Native American tribes. Mrs. Woodring's class in fourth grade, we have Nina and Ziv presenting their Native American research. And they wrote essays, and they illustrated a slide presentation. And using Google, they had to learn about how to decide whether a source is credible or not. Ms. Morales's class in fifth grade is Aiden, Sophia, and Liza. They wrote a class newsletter using Google Classroom and Drive, and even did some Microsoft Sway biographies of Native Amer...of American revolutionary figures. Ms. Varela's class is...was exploring green screen video, and they built...they had props and had a little green screen pizza box studio, and they used the Do Ink app to create their videos. And from what I understand, those green screen videos are pretty funny. So those...that's our technology that they...that they are working on. And it, like I said, it really is just a very small portion of what they...what they do in class. And thanks to their...their amazing teachers.
It may seem a little bit like a frenzy here. Some of you are looking at, what is going on up here? It was really hard for us to choose one group of students, or one class, or one project that was being prepared in all the classes. So we made sure to reach out to every teacher at Horace Mann in grades three through five to give them the opportunity to showcase what was happening in each class. And in Ms. Stratford's class, we also have Tali, as well as Alex, and they are sharing their eBooks.
And Alex did a prezi presentation on black holes. And I did not do a slide for their class, and I apologize very much. So they're fabulous teacher, and to Tali and Alex. Okay. Huskies? Horace Mann Huskies? They don't want to stop. Look at that. Okay, so they're...they're going to shake the hands of the board members and the cabinet members and say, "Thank you so much." Camille? Oh, they're shaking hands. Masa, don't forget to shake hands.
Huskies, we're going to exit following this direction. Follow Ezra over here. Make sure to thank our board members and our district personnel.
Thank you. Thank you, Husky Nation. Purple's my favorite color. Thank you. Guys are great. Wow, that was fun. Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Thank you, Laura Skerty. That was great. And thank you to all the teachers at Horace Mann, and thank you to the principal. Thank you. It was really fun. We're going to move to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda. We're just going to...Mr. Spitz, we're going to move item...
Move things around, right?
Item 10A to after report of closed session action. And we're moving public comment after the presentation.
Okay. Yeah, you want to approve this, and then I'll explain it? Yeah?
Yeah, can I...Mr. Spitz, you mind if I remake the motion with corrections?
Go right ahead.
Okay. So approve to...move to approve the agenda, moving item 10A to after item seven, and moving item eight, public comment after the item nine, the presentation by the police chief.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Spitz. Any discussion? I don't think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. So what...yeah. Report of closed session, that's right. Okay. Oh, yes. Okay, report of closed session, Dr. Bregge.
In closed session, the board voted five to zero to approve resolution number 2017-2018-020. These are to notify probationary employees identified by employee numbers NM 8473439, DP 5367247, FV 4868837, WM 0604677, VA 3558892, WH 4552951, BJ 0139429, HD 7219887, KK 8447995, ED 3566768. That probationary employees will be released from their probationary contracts effective at the end of the 2017-18 school year, and non-re-elected for the 2018-19 school year, and directed by the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. And just one more. In closed session, the board voted five to zero to approve the resolution number 2017-2018-021 to notify the administrative employee identified by employee number XM 7699253 that the administrative employee will be released from the administrative position effective June 30th of the 2017-18 school year, and reassigned for the 2018-19 school year, and directed by the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices.
Okay. Is that it, Dr. Bregge?
That's it.
Thank you so much. Firstly, I want to welcome our esteemed city council members, Mayor Lilly Bossy. I do not see Dr. Gold, so John Mirish and Mr. Wonderlick, who gave a great flag salute.
And Les Friedman is here.
Les Friedman is here. He stepped out for a moment. So I want to thank them for being here. I want to explain to you how we're going to do this. The board weighed in. We think this is a good way to do it. We invited the police chief. A couple weeks ago, we were at a liaison meeting. She graciously accepted right then and there to come. We said we'll do a more of a town hall style, so it's not...it's more of a dialogue, but the police chief will present. None of us have seen it, so it's fresh and new to everyone. I appreciate that. And then the board members and Dr. Bregge, and anyone up here can ask some questions. And then we're going to open it up to the public, and then we will ask questions again. And I'd like to ask everyone to please not boo, not clap, not yell, to be polite, to be quiet, to let the chief do her thing. And there'll be plenty of time for commenting, okay? But I'd like everything...everyone to be polite. Yes? Oh, okay. My apologies, chief. We're going to...we're going to let AYSO come up, because we have something...another good piece of news, a check presentation for field turf. So we always like to take those, and we know who they are. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Introduce yourself, because these are angels among mortals.
Rick Wolfen is the angel, and I'm the immortal, I guess. But on behalf of AYSO, Region 76, our yearly donation back to the school of $20,000. We are happy to make the presentation. We're part of what's going on in our community. And we want to thank all the parents and the school board and the city council for all your assistance in helping our kids grow up to become great adults. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Bregge gets it. Thank you. Thank you so much. So chief, you have the floor. Welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the school board for inviting us here tonight on what is a very important topic and something that's very near and dear, not only to my heart, but also the police department. I have to tell you that I started my day at Hawthorne with an orchestra, and ending the day with seeing the students just reminds me why we're all here. And we're really here for the best interest of our kids in this community. So my objective here tonight, as far as a presentation, is to really put aside some misconceptions that are floating around the community or the school, and really to give you a clear outline of what we're doing to keep our kids safe in the face of really what's happening today in the world. We are partners with your school team on safety, and I do want to comment, Dr. Bregge has been a wonderful partner as he's come in here, and also while he was away out of the office, still connecting with me as the police chief is fundamental. And your superintendent did that, and I deeply appreciate that. First, I really want to state, we have the city council here, that, as you know, they have repeatedly given full support to the Beverly Hills Police Department, not only to us on our day-to-day activities, but the plan that we're going to present here today. They have pledged to provide every possible resource that we deem necessary, and we continue to work closely with them as we always do in matters that really have to do with public safety. It's come to our attention that some community members are concerned that our decision tonight, as we present to you, to implement something called an adopt-a-school program in conjunction with our SRO program stems from a lack of staffing in the police department, that we are unable to staff with school resource officers in each campus, or that it also stems from officers being upset with the chief by not assigning them or assigning them as a school resource officer. Both could not be further from the truth. Our police officers are here today. They stand beside you on their support for our schools and the safety of our students. I do want to point out staff that's here today. We have Sergeant Max Subin, who runs our youth services unit. We have our school resource officer, Stephanie Freya. She will have a partner very soon. We have our school detective, our juvenile detective, Ubby Mendoza. And then we have the lieutenant of the unit, Lieutenant Dave Hamel. We also have Lieutenant Mike Hill. He works undercover in intelligence, and he's standing in the back. Sean Smol...okay. Pay no attention to the goatee. Sergeant Smolin is our community outreach sergeant. And then second-in-command of the department is Mark Coopwood, the assistant police chief. So as you probably know, many of you have been in the community for a long time, the police department has a solid track record of keeping this community, including our school, safe. Your city council and your police department have hired the best of the best and provide them with really every tool that we need to deliver the highest expectations, utilizing the most current resources available to us. Although sometimes we can't go into great detail on our operational protocols, I'm really here to assure you that our adopt-a-school program that we're going to present to you today, which we've outlined in handouts for you tonight, is far superior to the older SRO model used in the past. I've talked about it. Times have changed. Threats to our school have changed. Twenty years ago, we didn't have cell phones in the classrooms, Snapchat, Facebook. We need to change with the times. And traditional SRO programs, like we had here many years ago, are evolving, as we will discuss in more detail tonight. Our new programming uses the most current research and most advanced operational techniques available. We're implementing this on March 10th and assessing any need for changes as we go along. I want to assure you, between now and March 10th, we have increased our presence, which I see on social media, many people are commenting on, in and around the schools, and we will continue to do so until the transition becomes effective on March 10th, which is our internal shift change. In addition to the SRO program and adopt-a-school program, we are also implementing additional tools to enhance information sharing and increase school safety. These include school safety town hall meetings, as well as dedicated anonymous text platforms, and NICSOL safety text alerts for each school. You will see our planned activities, as well as our safety suggestions for the schools. Also, we have a three-pronged approach, school safety plan and a recommended action plan, and that's one of the handouts. So going back one slide, I believe that school safety is a three-pronged approach, and I continue to talk about the three-pronged approach. It's between the schools, police, and parents, each having really a shared responsibility for the safety and well-being of our children. I'll go into the partnership that we have with our schools on safety, but for parents, they need to have an understanding and a responsibility of what's going in the life on in the life of their children, watching for behavior changes, monitoring social media, and reporting things that don't feel right. One of the programming services that we offer is social media monitoring training, which we look forward to bringing to the schools and spreading it either through the PTA or the school district. Our school resource officers is sort of one of the major components of the three-pronged approach, and also our youth services unit, which works closely with the administration and the PTA council. In an effort to ensure a safe environment for both our students and our staff, we have an SRO, a school resource officer, at our schools on a regular basis, combined with a juvenile detective assigned to supporting issues related to minors. Our second school resource officer will be appointed in the next few weeks, and the second juvenile detective should be appointed by the end of the year. We also have plans to revisit the office space with the schools. We heard at our police town hall that we had five office spaces, one at each school, and we need to work to reinstitute those office spaces. Our thought is to use that office space and provide regular school resource officer hours to students, parents, and faculty. So I know we're probably going to be kicking somebody out of their room, but we want to take the room back, and we want to be present at the schools. So in this model that I'm going to present to you today, we have five schools that share two school resource officers, two detectives, in addition to five adopt-a-school officers. That's a total of nine officers supporting the schools. So I outlined up here the adopt-a-school program, which is new and will be rolling out March 10th. One patrol officer will be assigned to each school and also be responsible to patrol an assigned area, including the school. Adopt-a-school officers will enhance and support the school resource officer program by reaching the following goals. They will provide visibility at their assigned schools. They will provide a resource for our youth, parents, educators, and community members. They will maintain a safe learning environment. And they will magnify the reach of the police force through ongoing and open dialogue between the officers assigned to each neighborhood and our youth, parents, educators, and also community members. So these patrol officers will be assigned and responsible for individual schools. Each school, again, will have one patrol officer assigned to them, share the two school resource officers and two juvenile detectives. The adopt-a-school officer is not to replace the existing school resource officers, but rather will act as an additional liaison between their assigned school and the community. They will integrate visits to the school and participation in after-school programs as mentors into their patrol duties. They will also conduct presentations about the safety. This program is better than something that was dated, a dated school resource officer program from the '90s, because officers are working in and around each of the campuses. They are connected to the activity going around in the schools, and not just in the schools, but outside the perimeters of the schools. And the randomness of their presence can act as an additional deterrent. We know in several school shootings, the suspect planned around the daily routine activities of the school resource officer. We next have our traffic control officers. We have about two traffic control officers assigned to each school. Our traffic control officers will provide additional uniform presence during pickup and drop-off times. They assist parents in dropping off and pulling in and picking up the kids during the drop-off and pickup process. Dedicated traffic control staff to this assignment really allows the police officers to do the traffic...enforce the traffic laws and be visible and roaming around as security around the schools, really for the goal of improving traffic safety and walking, making sure we have a safe walking path to and from school. Our traffic control officers are equipped with police radios and have the ability to immediately communicate with our dispatch center, and they can directly communicate with also our police officers, really magnifies the eyes and ears around each campus. I've been present at all the campuses in the past week, and I know that we have...our traffic officers have failed to meet the objective, and we're working with our traffic unit to make sure we have not only consistent presence with the traffic officers, but they have assigned duties that...and expectations for their assignment. So in summary, I just want to talk about, and this really talks about the Beverly Hills PD school team. Each school will have dedicated traffic control officers to direct traffic at the start and end of school, having a dedicated also adopt-a-school officer assigned to each school who's responsible for the school and also the policing area around the school. All five schools will share two school resource officers, which gives us more flexibility to move the SROs and assign them based on the needs of the school and situation. We often find that we have a situation at one school or another that really requires more resources, and it's important to be able to be flexible, which this program allows. And last, all schools will share two police detectives responsible for supporting the school resource officers and also the adopt-a-school officers. So in total, the schools will have nine police officers as a resource and dedicated to the schools, which is more resources than five-person SRO program. We find that SRO programs are often siloed in the schools, and they don't have much communication outside the school. We feel this program is more effective because the program...the police officers have a broader reach than just the school. This plan, for me, is more effective because it adds an additional layer of resources, allowing for staffing and flexibility depending on the school and the school issue. And it instills a random patrol method to school visits and takes away from the silo that most school resource officer programs have. Those resource officers are generally not involved in the day-to-day activities of the school, and we really think this is important in studying this issue. This takes into account the entire area around the school to enhance the safety of the school. In addition, I think one of the other aspects of school safety, which we're really excited about, is the newly signed JPA, which added the CCTV component. This will give police immediate access to the cameras in the event of an emergency. I know we're still working on a timeline with the school, and our staff has met with your staff, and hopefully they'll have a projected timeline very soon. But I know the city donated 1.5 or 1.6 million dollars to make this happen. We also conduct an annual active shooter preparedness training on the school campuses during school breaks. We conduct this training in partnership with our fire department, as they play an instrumental role in rendering aid and saving the lives in any critical incident. We also continue an open line of communication to discuss issues of school security and safety, prevention, threat assessments, disaster preparedness. We talk about our response time, traffic safety, an important component of mentoring and conducting presentations on youth-related issues, including bullying. Part of our strategic plan in the police department included the creation of a youth services unit, which is comprised of school resource officers and juvenile crimes detective, and will also now encompass, impart, our adopt-a-school program. This unit is responsible for handling all incidents that occur on and around our campuses. The SRO is closely involved in working with the schools as part of the violence prevention plan. Furthermore, the following plans have been developed in partnership with the school district. In 2017-18, we helped with the Safe School Plans. We supplied our tactical experts to provide feedback to that plan. In 2012, after the Newton, Connecticut, school shooting incident, we developed a prevention program focused on interrupting an active shooter event. The police department and fire department also... The police department and fire department also participate in the school district's disaster awareness readiness teams, the DART training, which will be conducted this year on April 2nd, and part of this is active shooter training for the teachers. The police department also participates in ongoing training with faculty at all the schools within the district. The joint training drills we do are both announced and unannounced and are conducted at each school at least two or three times during the school year. We will be working right now to develop an anonymous tip line for the confidential reporting concerns by students or teachers that they want to bring to the attention of the police department. We currently are using the WeTip hotline and Crime Stoppers, but we think having a more personalized approach for something specifically for our students is a better fit. As a department, we have a track record in this community of having safe schools, which I know can change at any moment, but we have demonstrated that our plan is effective by taking immediate action on threats and instances of concern that have come to our attention. We are constantly working with the schools on assessing levels of threat and mitigating them immediately. These types of public safety services is why families move to the community. I've been given a directive, and we will report back to the city council on this plan in May, which will include a program assessment. I know that's only a few weeks, but we want to take a look at our progress in a few weeks and see if we need to make an adjustment. As always, we are proud to serve this community, and we're very appreciative of the incredible support and partnership we have with our schools. We're here to answer any questions and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Spagnoli. I'm going to start from my right, and then I'll speak last, but Dr. Bregge, before we start, Dr. Bregge, do you want to wait or say?
I'll wait.
Okay, it's up, but join in whenever you want. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to begin by thanking Chief Spagnoli and all of our officers here tonight. You know, we have one of the most incredible and committed police forces in the nation. You guys are amazing, so thank you for being here tonight, being present, and being willing to devote your time to making our students and our schools safer. What I'd like to discuss is a few measures that I think we can take to better protect our students. The reality of the situation is that regardless of whether or not we have two school resource officers, nine, 50, no amount of staff is enough to protect our students when our campuses are as open as they currently are. There are a virtually unlimited number of access points where students, potentially dangerous, adults, anyone can get into campus unsupervised and do something without anyone getting in their way. You know, when we have campuses where students can order pizzas and pizza delivery men can show up in the middle of the school without being checked, that's not safe. You know, I know this board is receptive and certainly open. We've talked about it, too, making our schools, you know, having closed campuses, I think that needs to be a priority. We need to have single or limited entry points. We need to ensure that our staff are monitoring each of those entry points. We need to be able to directly control where students, staff, people enter our campuses and where individuals can get in and out. Beyond that, there were a number of things in the presentation that were mentioned that I do think are really strong elements. For example, the anonymous tip line, I think that's crucial. We need to offer mediums for students, staff, parents to report anonymously, share concerns, and offer direct input in the process, because ultimately, they're the stakeholders here who deserve a say. You know, at the same time, we need to increase communication with community and students. We need to hold these open forums. This kind of dialogue tonight, this is crucial and it needs to be ongoing. I'd also like to discuss SROs, school resource officers. Now, you know, Chief Spagnoli, you mentioned the plan where you would have two SROs and a total of nine officers around campus, and that's great. At the same time, I don't believe that having nine officers and at the same time increasing our number of SROs from two to five, those two plans aren't mutually exclusive. You can offer both. You know, you can still have those traffic control officers, those juvenile detectives, those other officers who are able to assist the SROs and perform other safety functions while still having a constant presence at each campus at all times. When you talk about students, them being safe and them feeling safe, it's important for them to have a constant presence there, where if they're concerned about something, they have someone who they know is there 100% of the time who they can run to. They need someone who is committed to their campus, who doesn't have to split time between multiple campuses, multiple groups of students and communities, and is able to commit their time there. You know, we talked about the flexibility that this plan offers. I don't see why having an additional three school resource officers on top of that, not in replacement of that. In fact, that improves our flexibility, that offers more visibility for police officers on campus, and in the event of some tragedy, we want officers there, not at, maybe we have officers at two other schools, but what about the other three? We need someone there at that moment. I also think the advantages of having constant officers on campus go beyond simple student safety. You talk about promoting a campus culture where students, first of all, feel safe, where they know that they have a police officer there, and also promote a culture that discourages other, you know, illicit or undesirable behavior. You know, students, you know, not everything that goes on at our campuses is completely legal. Not everything that goes on at our campuses is something that students should be participating in, and not, and often, students don't feel entirely safe or protected, whether it's from a school shooter, from a peer, from whoever. And having that constant presence on campus, having that resource students can turn to on a daily basis, on a minute-by-minute basis, would go a long way towards making our students feel safer while they're learning and ultimately be safer in the event of any unfortunate, you know, circumstance occurring down the line. And so again, I'd like to thank our police force for being here. This is, this plan has some amazing elements. I just, at the same time, I'd like to emphasize that we need our students to be safe 100% of the time. Thank you.
Dr. Bregge, can you address some of these issues?
Some of the information that was brought up about a closed campus, we had discussions about recently, about just the number of ways to get on campus, to get off of campus, visitors coming in, and I think that there's been more conversation in the last week and a half about the number of people being able to get on and off campus than there has the entire year that I've been here, and I think that this is the catalyst to start making some of those changes. And I think we've gotten really comfortable with that flexibility, and, but this is a good time to address some of those concerns that we have about that easy access to all of our campuses. We are going to be looking at putting a perimeter around, this is at least for that, we're starting with the high school, around the high school so that we do have what's considered to be a closed campus with a single entry and exit area. And so that is going to be starting. We're going to be working on that in the next couple of weeks. There's a gate area that is going to be moved on, I think it's Heath, that'll be moved towards the end. It's just kind of not in the right placement for a workable access area. And so those are a couple of things, at least for the perimeter area that we're going to be working with, and I think that's important as we start making some of these decisions as far as the operational end, that we start sharing with the police department as well, so that we're not working in isolation. Then with the perimeter area, there is going to, what comes with that is the practices and the procedures that we've developed and gotten accustomed to over the years, as far as people moving freely about the campus and in different areas. So we're going to have to do a lot of communication. I'll be working a lot with Mr. Mead and with Mr. Blake about how and when that's done, and so that's going to be all happening within the next couple of weeks, as well as on the interior of the building with, we've heard bells and alarms, and it's a pretty old system that could be working one day, and the next day, they're not working. And so we are getting on top of that, and we're, we've walked the building, we've gone from one side of the building to the other with a vendor, so that we're starting to replace these things and replacing all of them, and having consistent, we're going to be doing tests throughout so that we're not just waiting for that one drill or two drills to happen at the high school and in all of our campuses. So we're just going to be doing tests so that we can make sure that PAs are working, bells are working. The perimeter issue is going to be then, we're going to be looking at our other four campuses with that as well. So just to add on to some of the closed campus, you know, that idea is, that's the single most way that we can work with the police department is having that single entry and exit area, and that's going to be a big learning curve for our students and for our staff and also for our parents, because we're going to have to redefine and really look at the best ways for drop-off and just those daily procedures that we get really used to and accustomed to. So that's what we're going to be doing over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. So I wanted him to tell you that everyone's dived into this. We've been walking and touring all the campus sites, and that was very useful information. We have timelines now, we have targets to hit.
And we'll communicate that out to you. We want to give you an idea of dates when this is happening, because I think it's important for you to know when you can expect to see some of these things. It's also important to, a lot of this information was coming in today, and we were putting it together, is working with our police department and our city so that you're fully aware of when something's happening, why it's happening, and we'd love to get your feedback and communication, not at the end, when it's finished, but as we go along.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Okay, Mr. Spitz, you're up.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Artel left little to be said, but he did speak about the one single element that could be added to this adopt-a-school plan, and I think this adopt-a-school plan is really outstanding. I have great confidence in it. There's been a lot of thought that's gone into it, and I'm very confident about it. The issue of adding to the plan a police officer who would be on each campus at all times, I'd like to speak to that for a moment, because if, God forbid, if that were the case, if God forbid a shooter were to be on campus and opened fire, there is a chance that an armed guard would happen to be at that very location at just the right time in a position to avert the tragedy or lessen it, assuming he's not shot first. And however slim that chance may be, it does seem to be the rationale for having an armed guard in each campus. There is another rationale that Jonathan mentioned, and that is for the benefit of the students, knowing that the officer is there and available to them. So it's an issue, it is an issue to have some further discussion and consideration, but there's also been some discussion that I have heard about having private armed guards on our campuses, private armed guards, other than Beverly Hills Police. And I will say this, that if, if we are going to have people with guns in our schools, I want them to be Beverly Hills policemen, assigned by the Beverly Hills Police Department and paid for by the City of Beverly Hills. And that's something that we should meet further with city officials as soon as it's possible, to work through that issue collaboratively. But I must say that I have full confidence personally in this adopt-a-school plan. I think it's been very, very, very carefully worked up, and I congratulate you for it. Thank you.
I actually had a question, if it's okay, to Chief Spagnoli on your slide, on your presentation, Slide 6. I think you mentioned that there was nine officers that would be put on or assigned to each of the campuses, but in looking at that slide, I came up only with eight. Is that possible, or is it nine or eight? Or maybe I misunderstood.
So it's two shared school resource officer, two shared detectives. We generally have two traffic control officers at each school, and then, let's wait, two shared detectives, two shared SROs, five adopt-a-scholes, one assigned to each school, and then at least one traffic control officer, but it's usually two, so that's nine.
Nine, okay.
A minimum of nine, sometimes 10.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. That was a question I had. Along the lines of what Mr. Artel and Mr. Spitz have said, I think I am in complete agreement that we have to have a closed campus at the high school and at all other four schools. I attended the town hall meetings two weeks ago on Thursday at the city council, the city council meeting last Tuesday, and the PTA council meeting this last Friday, where I listened over and over to the concerns shared by parents and resident staff members as well. I've received a great deal of emails on this topic, phone calls, and conversations with you all in passing or walking in the city as I'm doing my errands, and it's become very, very obvious to me that the issue of security and safety is on everyone's minds. There's no doubt that, for everyone in this room, I would say that, we can all agree that the culture and the world that we live in has changed, and it's unfortunate that the circumstances of violent threats and gunfire in schools has undermined the sense of security that our students have in their learning environments. So I just wanted to say that I came here tonight prepared with a list of things that I've heard over and over from all of you as it relates to, you know, having a single-entry closed campus system. The five of us have agreed to that. We, as board members, have requested a comprehensive security assessment plan, plans for all five schools. I believe that, just based on what Dr. Bregge has said, you know, I want to reiterate that those plans are in process. The security fence along the side of the entire high school, there was some questions about that, but we have, I wish Don Blake was here, because he's obviously not here, but Dr. Bregge, can you expand on the fence? Because I think it's really important to explain the optics of that fence exactly, if you can.
So I believe it's an eight-foot fence that will be going around the perimeter of the building with, there's going to be certain places where, you know, we obviously have to have some access, where people will be coming in and people will be leaving. It's going to be important that those access points, we'll be working with our security team that we have here at the high school so that, you know, that those areas are manned with people, but that is, you know, while we have the fence that's going to be going up, we want to talk about those access points and what personnel we're going to put there and when. And we haven't decided exactly where that will be. We have to keep in mind, too, we will be having an active construction area in like two weeks or so, and how we're going to work with that, with trucks coming in and out and those access points. But we hope to have that finished by about spring break.
Chief Spagnoli spoke about, I had a question for you again, Chief, I'm sorry, regarding the drills. You know, I think it's important for us to also understand that some of these drills always happen in classroom settings, but children, students, our students obviously have transition points where they're moving from one class to another, and they also go to lunch, and they go to recess, and they're students who congregate before school and after school, and I wonder, are these drills also going to be looking at different scenarios, not just the classroom environment that is usual when some of these drills occur?
And I'll let Dr. Bregge weigh in, but that's an important component of testing, you know, testing a system in a perfect environment when kids are sitting in a classroom and no one's in the restroom, and the teachers are everywhere where they're supposed to be. That's a perfect situation, but we need to test our system and stress it under what we really know as normal circumstances, which is, we know kids are in the hallway, we know that teachers may be in other areas of the campus, and so we need to test the vulnerabilities and then set up systems to make sure that we enhance the vulnerabilities to reduce the exposure to faculty and students.
Okay. Dr. Bregge? Dr. Bregge, did you want to add?
I just want to add that I think a really important feature of when we do these types of drills during different settings is to collect that type of data, looking at the number of classroom doors that that were not locked or the number of, if there was a PA that wasn't operative inside a classroom. I think that's the only way where we're going to create a measure for ourself and the police department if we're open and honest about what's working and what's not working. And I think that that goes for both settings. And the police have, Officer Freas did approach me about doing this at a time where it was during the middle of lunch. And so, and we want to be able to do that. But we want to be able to have a system so that it's that we that we learn from each drill that we do because each time it's done at different times, you know, you have a could have a different result because you could have people on campus or it could be during testing. And so we just want to make sure that we have a system in place so that the the information that we gather and collect is actually useful, and we're happy to provide that that information with you. We need to be transparent about that.
I also wanted to remind everyone, there used to be a safety committee that used to meet at the high school with different representatives from each school and members of the board, staff, and the Beverly Hills Department. And I I wonder why those meetings, I'm not aware that those meetings have taken place since 2015. And I think that it's, some of the parents recommended a safety committee, and I think it's important that that committee be reinstated as soon as possible so that this, so that all these improvements are communicated and to that committee first and then, of course, to the general school community as a whole, so that we have better education and information coming from and to the committee. So as I said, I agree, I don't want to be redundant, I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Artel and Mr. Spitz, and I would assume that my colleagues to my left also share the same commitment to safety and and security. I want to thank our chief of police for being here tonight with our entire police department that's here. I'm committed to discussing and taking actions with members of this board to see how we can best improve security and safety. I'm convinced that every school board member here, again, and staff member, and our our police chief, our chief of police and our department, our police department as a as a whole, and the city council is, you know, I believe that we all, I'm confident that we all believe in our hearts and in our actions that we want what's best for our students and security and safety, of course, is a a number-one priority for everyone. And I I think that working collaboratively, openly, not against each other, I think that together we we are going to have good results, great results. And I think the fact that we're having this conversation as a community is very healthy and something that hasn't taken place. But times have changed and unfortunately, and we had to take drastic measures to really secure our children, our students, and our staff, and our school community. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to welcome, I'd like to welcome the city council members. It's a pleasure to have you here. It's, as we like to say, it's actually the students' classroom in our boardroom. And I wanted to thank the chief for the presentation and along with your staff for being here. Schools should always be safe havens for students. Schools should be a place where parents don't have to worry about their child coming home. For the past four years and during the many weeks of school reconfiguration discussions, I discuss the need for discernible school safety, for full-time counselors, for SROs. The last time I made that statement was a Tuesday night before the Florida shooting. In the 1990s, the Department of Justice provided a grant for SROs. And about 1996, we had SROs for about a 10-year period in this town. The city was kind enough, through the JPA, to provide us with a sergeant and five officers that were stationed at each campus. Those were school resource officers. Many of parents here tonight, as I look out, remember our children interacting with those school resource officers. Unfortunately, times did change. There were fiscal, there was a fiscal downturn in 2008, '09. The city professed not to have the money for SROs, and that program was eliminated. The elimination of the SRO program was a strategic way for the city to absorb budget reductions. That comes straight from a staff report dated August 5, 2014 from the city. I am pleased and generally pleased to hear from the city council that money is no longer an issue when it comes to security. That's important. That's important thing. That's a starting point because we can't do any of this, whether it's fencing, whether it's security protocols, whether it's officers, without funding. So that's so crucial to have that commitment from our city council. So the question now becomes the adopt a school program that Chief Spagnoli has proffered. And Chief, may I ask you to please come to the mic? Obviously, over the last number of weeks, you've spoken publicly with regard to the adopt a school program, and obviously, the only research I can do is online and looked at many adopt a school programs. So is this a part of a national model, adopt a school? Is this, this is something that you and your staff came up with, specific for our district?
It's actually a national model. I think when you run adopt a school, there's two forms of adopt a schools. It's companies adopting schools for financial reasons or support, but there's also policing adopt a schools. So when you do your search, you have to be mindful of making sure your search criteria includes the word policing.
Okay. Now, I know you've spoken many times, and you had indicated you started in the San Carlos Police Department, and you mentioned that you were an SRO officer.
Right.
What has changed from from the duties that you used to undertake versus when you say that times have changed, kids have cell phones? What has changed with that SRO model that that no longer seems to apply?
So as I sit and I hear and read many emails and I hear some of the comments, you know, a lot of times we hear the word synonymously, "security officer," because people want to see a security officer and a school resource officer. And if you really fundamentally look what a school resource officer is, it may encompass the mere fact of their presence of having some security, but their primary function is not as a security officer. The primary function now, what has changed significantly, is when you're trying to change, when you're trying to chase rumors and activities of students, it doesn't keep you on a campus. And if you talk to our school resource officer that's here today and also our detective, they'll tell you that their job goes way beyond the boundaries of the school. So the days of having a school resource officer that just stayed on campus, and that was really in the early 90s when programs were first developed and really trying to develop the relationship between students and police, which I do think is very important. When we can expand it, expand that relationship out beyond not only a few officers, but we when we can have our programs and services go beyond the boundaries of the school, fundamentally, that's what a school resource officer is. A security guard stands in front and secures the safety of a property or an area, but a school resource officer is more than somebody who's planted in one school. And the proposal that we have tonight gives some more flexibility and also puts more resources to what I think is an important program.
So when you're at with the San Carlos Police Department, and I have family that live up there, they currently have an SRO program. Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of the structure of the program. However, I don't think that they have enough, I was one school resource officer covering multiple schools.
Okay. And you also worked in the Benicia Police Department, and at that time, they had a school resource program?
We did. We did.
And they currently have a school resource program?
Correct. And we had one dedicated officer to multiple schools, similar to the program that we have now, that we're offering.
And you worked with San Leandro, you're the police chief, Leandro, excuse me.
Yes.
Do the Spanish flair.
Yes.
And you were the police chief there? And during that time, you had an SRO program?
Correct. We supported a single school resource officer to all of our elementary, middle school, and high school program.
So let me ask you this. Based on the plan that you're proffering to the community, which seems well thought out, is there any reason the school district itself couldn't layer their own SRO officers embedded at each site?
I think it's functionality. And when I talk about a model program and functionality, because what I'm hearing is I want a police officer standing on my campus. No matter how many officers you have, functionality, the function of a of a school resource officer is to go beyond, you know, you have truancy issues that the school resource officer needs to handle that needs to take them away from the school. And so what I'm telling you in my professional opinion, programming, when it comes to school resource officer programs and adopt a school programs, does not maintain one single officer sitting at a school to be effective. Right now, we're trying to manage intelligence and data that comes from our students and also comes from outside our walls. And sometimes that's hard to do sitting on campus because we have intelligence officers within the police department and also outside the boundaries of our city. And so we need to maintain those communications and we need to have visits and meetings. And so I think in many ways, we're saying different things. When we offer the services and we bring support to the schools, the idea of having someone plotted on campus, armed during all school hours, is a security guard, not a school resource officer. A school resource officer offers safety, and our program outlier, outlies more than, you know, almost eight police officers and two traffic control officers that can support that function.
Right. And those officers are coming and going throughout the day according to the plan. If there is going to be an SRO officer as proffered, they'll have office hours, so those office hours will be publicized to the community, whether it's the children, the students, staff, the greater community. So if somebody was going to do harm, they would know when to expect an officer on site.
When to expect the school resource officer, but not when to expect the additional officers that can reinforce the school resource officer program. And I think that that's important to understand.
So let me ask you this. Obviously, you've heard a lot from the community, just like we have, we, I could just speak for myself as a board member, I probably receive 100 emails a day, texts, and telephone calls in total. I'm sure you've received quite a few, and I've heard the city council has as well. If at some point in the future, you decided to hire dedicated SROs, would you have to ask the city council to do that, or do you have hiring authority?
So we have hiring authority for 140 officers. Included in the 140 officers are two-school resource officers. If we wanted to add, we would ask, we would ask the city council that we would need three additional officers, and we don't have any longer, we don't have a hiring problem. We're at 135 officers, and we're very close to being at capacity. I think that I go to the three-pronged approach, you know, and I hear what the members said about about being safe. And I think that we're jumping to these solutions without all of the three partners sitting down and doing their part in this problem. And I think it's really easy to now, and it's the reason why we made the commitment between now and March 10th to be in the schools and be visible, because we understand that there's a gap, and we understand that that gap's going to be solved on March 10th. And as Dr. Brady, Bregge says, that there are things and safety measures that we can put in place. Once those safety measures are put in place, you're going to have students that are going to feel safer. But right now, we talk about the feeling of safety and being safe. I can say we are safe, but I can also say, I hear from some students and parents, they don't feel safe. Once we start doing the single point of entry and exit and doing these other things, I think that we can have additional conversations on evaluating what we're doing now and what we need in the future.
So if I understand, and I understand what you're saying about that, but with regard to specific dedicated SROs, you indicated that you have authority for 140 officers. You're at approximately 135.
Yes, we are.
If you were to make a determination that with this plan in place and our security measures that we're going to undertake in the next few weeks that the community will be told about, and and if this board, superintendent, staff, the community in general still has a feeling that we want not just the safety component, but the security component of dedicated officers, would it be in your discretion to hire those officers, or would you have to go back to the city council?
The city council would have to approve additional staff to accommodate three additional SROs, and it's it's pretty typical. We have 140 officers, and we have programming in place for all those 140 positions. And so additional additional officers would be hiring additional officers or eliminating programs in other areas to accommodate such.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. And I tend to agree to the extent that we should have some type of secure, armed security on campus, preferably Beverly Hills Police Department. I think that would be, you know, the most efficient, but it sounds like we're not in a, that the department's not in a position to give those to us. So I would also want to look at outside entities to do this.
And Mr. Margot?
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Like Mrs. Haker said, this actually, this issue has brought our community together. I know there are some divided opinions amongst us, but we are all here discussing this. The council took immediate action at their last meeting to address this issue. The board met last week in a study session and addressed the issue under our facilities' subject matter, and here we are tonight. So that's a good thing because we're talking, right? Communication is a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Artal, for your comments. I agree with them. You stated them wonderfully, and you're a good example of our district. So I appreciate that. I agree with everything my colleague said up here. I wanted to focus for a second on school connectiveness. I know I can reiterate the fact that I believe some sort of presence on campus is important. The, you look around town and you see armed guards in front of jewelry stores and armed guards in front of religious schools, and you have to start to wonder with the condition that the world is in, do we have to change our focus here? So that's something that the board is diving into. Like Mr. Spit said, if we're going to have anybody armed on our campuses, we would prefer to have the police. I agree with that. Connectiveness, I was talking to our Christopher Hertz about this, about students feeling connected to their schools. And they have assemblies, they do anti-bullying, they talk about these things, and then we kind of summarily dismiss them and wish, hope for the best. But like the chief said, this is a three-pronged approach, and parents and school and police are all involved in this, and I 100% agree with that. So parents, on their end, you know, we have a big responsibility because it's our job to raise our kids, right? It's our job to help our kids feel connected. It's our job to talk to our kids every day and make sure that if they've had a bad day, we take action as parents, not put it on the school's shoulders as parents to help our children have a better experience in their schools. Because that's the first block that you need to build, is that your students need to be connected to their school and feel at home at their school and feel like it's a place that they can be and they feel happy with. Because students that feel that way, students that identify with their schools, are less likely to come back later on in life with an AR-15. And that's really important. It can't be overlooked. So Mr. Goldstein has been pushing for counselors. I don't know if it's counselors or psychologists, by the way, I don't know what would be the best. But we do need to tighten up that aspect of our district. We do need to have a place for students to go, to be heard, to be understood, and to be wanted, because that will help in the prevention aspect. And we have to start that early on. And we have to give every student who feels loss, who feels alone, who feels abandoned, who feels threatened, an opportunity to get rid of those feelings in a safe, comfortable environment. That has to happen. So we, as a board and a staff, need to look at that because that's on us. That is on us. It's also on the parents. It's also on the parents. Don't forget that. It's on us while your kids are in our buildings at school during the day, but they go home. And we need to talk to our children, and we need to look at it and say, one of the officers at the BV meeting said something that was great, and I haven't done it yet, but stay on your kids' social media, get their passwords, know what they're doing. You pay for those phones, you own those phones. And I agree with that. And thank you very much for bringing that up. It's been resonating in my head. The the issue about having about having presence on the campuses kind of boiled down to me to how quickly the response time is. I think I think the program that you've offered, Chief Spagnoli, is terrific, but I think what Mr. Artal said is paramount, that that in addition to have some sort of presence, preferably yours, can't substitute that. You, the reaction time, if an officer who has adopted a school is not at the school and something happens, that's going to increase the response time, right? That's common sense. Whether it's 30 seconds or 90 seconds, the amount of damage that could be done in that time, and we've seen being done, increases. So if we can, whatever we can do, single-point entry, choke points, whatever we need to do in our school with our police department to reduce that, we should do. So I'm kind of, I'm hearing all of my colleagues center that to that, that same idea of we'd like to have something on campus because the world has changed, and we cannot be blind to it anymore. I was blind to it until... I was blind to it until February 14th. I thought, okay, we can do without it. We need single-point entry, we need controlled access, but I didn't really believe yet about having some sort of presence to protect our children. But then I thought about the jewelry stores and the religious schools, and I thought, our children are just as worthy as that to be protected. Thank you.
As that you've heard from the board, we've, I've read every single one of your emails. I've read, reread some of them. They're heartfelt, they're, they're, you know, very, I think, honest, and they're raw. People are genuinely afraid, and I don't blame any of you. I, when I was, last time I was board president, I advocated for gates and fences at the high school to close off everything. And Mr. Marish came up, very, very funny, and he did an impersonation of Ronald Reagan, and he said, "Mrs. Korbitov, tear down that gate." And we all chuckled, and that subject went away again. Couple of years ago, the subject came back. Dave Jackson advocated strongly, almost from the time of his arrival, to really shut down the high school campus. People came and told us it would resemble a prison, that the open green space was what made us unique. I think reality has set in. I think we all have to understand that when I reached out to the good mayor, Lily Bossy, to ask for a liaison meeting, it was before Parkland. And, you know, we had a very wonderful discussion that she hosted in the council conference room that day, and we all couldn't have known what would happen just a few days later. You know, I don't want to learn on our own skin. I don't want to learn that we could have, should have, would have. We have to unfortunately take the tragedies around us, the misery on all these people, and learn from them. I watched when the president hosted the governors, I watched when he hosted the families, and the pain and the agony in those parents, voices and eyes, it's unspeakable. So selfishly, as a board member, I don't want to have to live through that. I want to get ahead of this and, and, and close down these campuses in a thoughtful, comprehensive, try to be aesthetic, but safety and security is paramount. Aesthetics come after. Governor Rick Scott has moved his position when it comes to gun laws. He's gotten more thoughtful and reflective, because he's dealing with now multiple tragedies for different reasons. The Pulse nightclub, the airport, and now the schools. So he has said that he is not waiting for the federal government. He's not waiting for anyone. He's allocating, I believe, 450 to 500 million to put one armed officer at every school with 1,000 kids. Every 1,000 kids gets an officer. If we were in Florida, we'd have one at each K-8 and two at the high school, which is what I'm advocating for. In most instances, I would say to you, less is more if it's chocolate, or my husband would say handbags, or dogs. But in this case, more is better. More is better. I told the chief of police that I'm enamored of her work. I, I, I love our people in blue, even when they give me tickets, and you all have given me tickets. So I, honestly, I just want more of you. I mean, this is me saying, I have a bounty of treasure, and I just want more. We all live here because of the quality of life. The schools, the police, the fire, and the paramedics, they are a four-legged stool. When one leg is not quite strong, the others don't feel stable. So all four legs are strong, they're excellent. Many of us moved in for the schools, but we stay because of the quality of life. We stay because paramedics has saved my father's life. EMTs are there, you guys are a heartbeat away, your response time is stellar. You treat us all really well, even when we're not always behaving so well. And I thank you, but I'm just saying, as a board member, as a parent, as a resident, I need more. I love what you offered me, Chief Spagnoli. I accept. Thank you. It's wonderful. I think that this dialogue has, has borne fruit. But I will say to you that, as I told you privately, as I told you publicly, that I feel this community, and I believe it's a deterrent, I believe that someone there, as a school resource officer is fantastic, but someone they're guarding with a badge and a squad car and a, and a gun and training is gold. And someone who wants to come through will think twice. I know the culture in Israel is different. I know we've seen all the emails and all the examples about Israeli schools, but they haven't had one homicide since 1974. And yes, it's a culture that everyone goes to the army, most people, we're not there. We're not Israel, we're not a country of 8 million, we're all not conscripted into the army, we're not all comfortable handling handguns, and in Israel, they have much stricter gun laws than we do. Much stricter. But if you have 100 kids in a school, there's an armed police officer guard outside the school. School's locked down. There's a lesson in that. Two times since 1974, people tried to breach, they were, they were taken out by teachers. That's okay. Most of those teachers served in the army, our teachers do not. I'm not advocating to arm teachers. That's not our culture here in Southern California. I'm not, I'm not here to tell the country what they should do. But I believe that in the most famous city in the world, the most iconic city in the world, and a 90210 address, and a population that is predominantly Jewish, we are a very, very rich target, and we have to be honest about that. So, you know, we have to be honest about where we stand in the world. And I was on a train in Scotland, and I bought peanuts, and they had a picture of City Hall, and, and I sent it to Mahdi, and I sent it to a few others, and no one could understand why the peanuts were Beverly Hills peanuts on a train in Edinburgh. Because we're that world famous, so people bought the peanuts for twice what they should pay, because it was Beverly Hills peanuts, and they're probably from, you know, like, you know, Virginia or Georgia. They're not Beverly Hills peanuts, we don't grow peanuts. But, but it's an example, wherever I go, and if I, I try not saying from Beverly Hills, because then the questions don't stop. Do you, do you see movie stars, you know? But if you say Beverly Hills, it starts up an entire conversation. We've all traveled the country, the world, we know that. I think it would be imprudent of us to not admit it, that this is, you know, in a time of increased terror and a time of, of, of problems in the world where children, unfortunately, where people go into gun-free zones, which are schools, and shoot them up. I think we have to understand, we have to learn. Our campuses are wide open, they're porous. I've walked all five. We're going to close them down. It's coming, it's coming fast. Dr. Braggy and Don Blake and others will work on this. I'm confident it'll be done within, I hope, weeks. We have to put up cameras, strategic lighting, we have to have safe rooms, we have to do everything. We have to have walkie-talkies, we have to have better communication, we have to do everything. When the chief has said, "Your schools need to do something," she's absolutely right. And she doesn't say it from a point of criticizing us, or the mayor, or any council people who said it. I, I watched the town, the council meeting. We have to do a better job, and this is a partnership. But we can't ask for something if we're not willing to put ourselves out. So we, as a board, have taken upon ourselves, with Dr. Braggy, we are going to shut down these campuses in the most thoughtful, comprehensive way we can. But we can't forget that there's been, according, 300 shootings, school shootings since 2013. Now, when you take all that, it's someone who unloaded a firearm outside, it's, it's many different types, but basically 300 instances since 2013 where a loaded gun was fired. And some instances, there were, there were, there was casualties. So I'm advocating to accept your program wholeheartedly. Thank you. If, if I can accept as one board member, thank you, chief. We all accepted, so thank you. I'm, I'm in your debt, I appreciate it. I think you've gone out of the box and really, you've been patient and listening and, and really stepped up, and I thank you. So as I said to you, I need more. And I, and I respect your opinion, it's your professional opinion, I respect your opinion to do it this way. I, I understand, and I'm not here to argue with you. I'm just here to say that, as one board member, we, I, I don't know, I think the majority of us feel that we need to have armed security at each school site. It also begs the question, what do we do after 4:00 PM when the JPA, or 3:00 PM when the JPA starts? That's another conversation we're going to have to have, because we, I think we understand that if there isn't an armed presence there, or a presence there after 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM when we're not there, and then someone could gain access and be there in the morning when we open the gates. So we're going to start to think about this very proactively. So we'll, there's more discussions to come about JPA and the hours and, and, you know, park rangers and ambassadors and police and our police, you know, our guards if we get them. But I'd like to say to you that when I drive the city, you know, the Federation has an armed force, Wiesenthal Center, Holocaust Museum in Palm Pacific Park, Valley Bes Shalom, all the day schools, all the high-profile target areas, they all have armed presence. And there aren't thousands of kids inside. It's adults, and they come and go at will. So I just want to say to you that that's how I'm looking at this. I think we need an armed presence at all times, but I happily accept what you're offering me as an additional, maybe the foundation, but I, I feel we need that.
So, yes, thank you very much. And may I just give clarity, not to sell this program, but one of the things that I think is really important about this program is it really offers that 24-hour coverage that you don't have now, because your adopt a school officers, you know, we work 24 hours a day. And so we had heard the concern of students being dropped off after a game at 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night. And although we're a very safe community, they would feel safer to have an officer there. And part of the adopt a school officer and the school resource officers would be aware of activity and after-hours activities, so we can have that presence. So part of this does provide that. In addition, I just wanted to give clarity to Howard's question related to the budget. And I was talking functionally, very formally, that the formal part of the process is that we do take extra officers to council to adopt. However, as you heard at our presentation to the city council, that they have unanimously approved, if we make that request, that it would be approved. So I was answering your question very literally, although we know that the city council said that they would already approve that. So I just wanted to give clarity.
Right, and, and we've heard them on a number of occasions, and we do thank you for that. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We recognize that.
Chief, we, I think the community should understand, this is your program, and, and not yours, but this is a program that you are very strongly behind and you're very exuberant about, and I appreciate it. And if at any time you decide something else, you will go talk to your city manager, Mahdi Illusry, and you will talk to your council, or he will talk to the council, that's how it works, and we'll talk again about it.
Exactly, exactly. And I think it's really important to have the ongoing discussions, because there's clarity that we'll have with the school and clarity that I think you want from us and also community members. Because, you know, when you, when I hear the terms like "security guard," I understand in what perspective it is. However, you know, the officers, you know, are not meant to be security guards. They have, you know, they have another really important job if you want a school resource officer program. So as we continue this dialogue, and I'm, I'm glad that we're having this dialogue, I think it's coming and regrouping and sitting down and having these discussions as we, as we both make progress in what we have to offer, as you make progress, and as we start talking to community members and parents, and they become more proactive with their kids and more engaged in the day-to-day activities, not with bringing them and dropping off, but really what their kids are doing when they're not around. So thank you.
So chief, just so you know, that I would hope, and I know Dr. Braggy's committed to this as well as Mr. Blake, that you would obviously bring back a company where the secured person, the armed security person, is really much more than just an armed guard. I mean, these people are going to come from companies that are highly trained, you know, really of a very, I mean, of a very high caliber. I hope no, you know, different than your officers, but I hope that if we go that way, they can work together. I hope that they will, you know, basically find them to be compatible in some way.
So if I can speak to that, one of the, one of the things that we have introduced in our officers' training in the last many years is the de-escalation and the specialty training that police officers have in dealing with young people. We know that you have a population that special needs on a really, on, on many levels, from a very special needs kid to a kid that's a borderline. And, you know, our officers have that training to de-escalate. And I think that that's a very important part of the discussion. I know Dr. Braggy's very familiar with that. And, you know, my concerns, when you bring on outside security, no matter how well-qualified, no matter how much experience they have, that they don't have the de-escalation techniques, particularly in dealing with troubled minors, because the goal is to de-escalate the minor or the threat versus take it out immediately. Sometimes we have to take out a threat immediately, and that is our job. But I think it's important to understand when you have at-risk youth, which we know we have in our population, that they require special handling, which our police officers have been trained to do. So as we continue that discussion, I hope that, that is a piece of the discussion, because that is probably the one thing that worries me when somebody asks, "Why did you have to shoot them?" And I, I'm concerned that we can work together and have this continued discussion to make sure the best solution really has the kids and the at-risk kids at mind, because a security guard protects you from that person that's coming in. But remember, we're talking about threats also internally, and de-escalation is an important piece of that.
Thank you. Does the board have any more comments?
No, I just wanted to say, everything that Chief Spagnoli just said actually furthers the argument of putting officers at schools, because that was very well-stated. Do we have public comments?
Well, additionally, I'd just like to say that a lot of these companies are actually on private high schools and parochial schools, so they are dealing, I would assume, with some issues of de-escalation as well. I'm, I would hope they have training. And Dr. Braggy, you'll, you'll research, I mean, that'll be something you look at when you bring forward some options.
We will, because I think that it's important that people don't forget that we've been talking a lot of, you know, kind of that 10,000-foot view of what's happening on the school and security, but it all really starts on the inside, in, in our classrooms and with our students and with our parents, and that's a key piece. And it's tied into feeling safe and comfortable in your school. And I think that we've got a lot of work to do there, and we've talked about that this year, and we need to make improvements there. One of the things that, that we get to do on, on our team is, is take that deeper dive and start spending some time getting from our students where they feel safe in school. I think it's great that we're, we're thinking about putting some, a priority on safety, whatever that looks like, the most, the more that we have, the better. But I think that we can't forget and just rely on having personnel when a lot of those issues start with us first. And I want to make sure that we, as a team, are able to identify those areas. This is not a one-size-fits-all approach, and it's also giving respect to being site-specific. So while we need to be consistent with our procedures, I think it's really important to get the voice of our students to know where they feel safe, when they feel safe, in their specific schools, and share that data with our police department, and get that information from our, our staff and also from our parents. So that's a commitment, as we are working on a lot of these other issues, that you're going to be seeing some presence from us and meeting with you in your schools, because I think that it's, we, each school is different, and I think that we have to provide that opportunity to get some, some, some information from our students and parents as well.
Dr. Braggy, Isabel, you have a comment? Yes, Mr. Spitz. And then I wanted just to offer up the council members, if you'd like to come address us or the public, that's fine. After all of that, I'm going to ask the public to come up. I have your speaker card.
So just, Mr. Spitz, you want to go first?
No, you go.
Okay. So, Dr. Braggy, as you talk about school safety and students feeling safe in their environments, and Mr. Marga spoke about being connected to our environments in a school setting, I, as a board member... in a school setting. I, as a board member, would like to know, because there seems to be confusion about how we go about dealing with issues of bullying, and in particular, when students make threats to classrooms or to schoolmates and maybe even a school. How many of those, you know, how many students actually made those kind of threats? How were those threats dealt with in each of the five schools? Also, issues of cyberbullying and Instagram and videotaping. There seems to be confusion about what the repercussions are when students take those actions against other students. And I think we need to be really clear on what our policy is and what, 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 what kind of discipline measures as a district we would take if a student acts in this way. Because, again, I think there is confusion, and we need to try to detour that type of behavior. And it's part of feeling safe. It's, it's part of that entire conversation that we're having. And I think it'd be good, I don't know if we can have that enclosed, or we would have that in open, but it's a conversation to be had, for sure.
We can absolutely have that in an open session, because I think this is something that we've shared with our parents over time, is that we've been re-looking at our, our school culture and our programs, especially as it relates to bullying. And so, we've spent some time on that. We'll be making some recommendations towards their, our policies and our procedures, the way that they're reported, and even how our administrators are actually doing investigations. So, we've been doing some training, and we'd be happy to provide the Board of Education with an open session update.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, of course, Mr. Spitz.
I just would like to point out one thing, and that is this. The safety of our students and our staff, while they're in our schools, is the responsibility of the Beverly Hills Police Department. It is their responsibility. It's on their shoulders. And it strikes me that we have to think hard and long and consult with the city before we put people with guns on our campuses who are not policemen. I can visualize, I can visualize, if God forbid, the worst kind of situation developed, I don't think the police need somebody else with guns on the campus. There could be all kinds of chaotic stuff happening. So, I, I just want us to remember that we, we, as, as, as a board and, and, and our, and our staff, we're one of those three legs. But the ultimate responsibility for safety is in the police of Beverly Hills hands, and we shouldn't forget it.
Mr. Spitz, may I counter that?
Of course.
As a board member, as a trustee, your, our responsibility is the well-being and safety of all these students and to educate them. That's our responsibility. If the police want to offer a program, I'm very, very glad to accept it. But I think if the majority of this board, in consultation with people we consult with, feel that it is not enough, and if the families and the parents out there feel it is not enough, then I don't think it's enough. So, in the absence of getting one SRO at each school full-time and two at the high school, I believe we need two at the high school, for 20 acres, I think it's incumbent on us to find a solution. So, I, you know, I agree with you, in a perfect world, the responsibility is theirs. Yes, because they are, they are public safety. But we have a responsibility to safeguard our schools. And, and we are separate from the city. We are governed by the state. We are not an appendage of the city. The school, the school board is a separate legislative body.
I, I agree with you. My point is, that if we're not satisfied with that program, that it goes far enough, that we should make every effort to work with the city collaboratively to resolve it.
So, what do you think we've been doing for the last month?
I don't think this board has met with the city yet. I think a couple of you met individually, and you failed to reach a collaborative arrangement. And I suggest that we go forward with the city and meet with them and try to resolve this collaboratively.
And I wanna just clarify, Mrs. Gorbachev, for everyone here and for, I guess, the board. I was not aware, I learned that you and Mr. Goldstein met with the mayor and, I believe, Chief Spagnoli. But I, I never knew that that was agendized. I didn't know what the outcome of that meeting is. And so, I'm happy to hear that you had a meeting, but I think that we're just in the, as one board member, I, I wanna be very transparent. This is really a first-time conversation for me with all of you and with the chief. I've listened to the chief. I've listened to the city council. But this is the first time, I mean, and I, I'm in agreement with everything that I think we've all agreed to at the study session and today. So...
Mrs. Hacker, Dr. Breggy was at that meeting. It was a meeting before Parkland. After the meeting, we went to a town hall. After the town hall, Mayor Bossy gave a special section of her council meeting, and she was very transparent and very, let everyone come up and talk. I watched it. You were there. You know, I would say to you that we can collaborate a lot. I think this program is very collaborative. But if the majority of this board thinks that we want an armed presence, hopefully of an extremely reputable, known quantity, someone that's guarding Wiesenthal, guarding the Federation, guarding Valley Bechelom, guarding, you know, all the other high-profile places, I, I don't think that, you know, it, it takes a lot more collaboration to know that we want more at our school sites. Doesn't mean we don't want this. This is wonderful, no objection. But we want an armed presence from 7:30 AM or 7:00 AM till 4 o'clock PM, 4:30 when the kids are basically out of the school site. And we want it five days a week. I don't understand what we're waiting for. I just don't understand that. I've been here eight years. I've wanted this for eight years. That's why I hired EBI. I was told at the time, there was no officers available. There was no money. There was no officers. Then we got them, and then we had a problem, and they're gone, and we never brought them back. Now, the city's offering this, and this is great. I just feel I still need an armed presence at the campus. And I don't understand what is so confusing about that. And the mayor'd like to speak.
Thank you very much. And I just, I wanna make it clear that everybody in this room and everybody who's watching, all has the same end goal. This is not an us against them, or I care more, you care less, or, we all feel the same way, and we all want the same exact goal, which is that our schools are safe and that people feel safe and are safe. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, with that being said, I don't believe that there is anybody in this room or anybody watching who understands and knows the safety of our city better than our police chief and our police department.
Right.
And when I've, when I've received the calls, and I've received the emails, and I've been on the calls till 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning and such, and I've had parents say exactly what you're saying, and I ask them, "Okay, let's not talk about the schools for a moment, but let's talk about, how do you feel in terms of the city? Do you feel safe living here in this community?" And every single person has said to me, "Yes." That's why they live here. That's why they stay here, as you said, President Gorbachev. Why people stay here is because they feel safe in this community. We trust our police to keep us safe. We trust our fire department to keep us safe. And we trust our schools, hopefully, to keep us safe and to educate our children. What, what the chief has before us, is what she is saying, is better than the five SROs. What she is offering is more SROs, more police protection, seven days a week for 24 hours a day. Okay? I will let the chief address that. I'm not speaking out of school. I have, I have met with the chief many times on this. And what she is offering is a better program, a safer program, than the five SROs. I don't know why anybody feels that we know better than our chief of police and better than our police department. But that being said, that being said, what the council has said unanimously is, "Chief, if you find that this program is not giving the absolute safety that everybody in this room wants, that our chief wants, then you have the resources that you need to make it happen." But we also said that, "Come back to us in two months' time." We gave a timeframe. "Come back to us and evaluate with everybody how this program is working." You want to put something in place without even seeing if it works. And that, to me, is outrageous. So, from my perspective, the chief and the police department, believe me, are, are working so hard to keep our schools safe. But as we talked about, it's a three-pronged approach. And when we had our council meeting, most of the, the conversations, most of the parents that came before us were Beverly Vista parents or high-school parents that were saying, "We have an open campus. No matter how many police officers you put on, on these schools, if you don't have your part done, and you don't have a timeline," we gave a timeline. We gave a two-month timeline to come back. I don't hear a timeline when this is gonna be gated up at all. So, from my perspective, I ask that you give the faith that, why we live in this community, to our police department. Because nobody, I don't care which security department you have, is going to understand our community and keep our community safe like our police department. And believe me, even if before two months from now, if the police chief feels that we need to add more, she has the support. But I find it absurd that you're not even willing to give it a chance. Thank you.
Madam, Madam President, the timeline on, the timeline on, on enclosing our high school, the fencing is going up, as I understand it, during spring break?
Correct.
Spring break takes place, starts two weeks from now. So, there is a timeline. And it's, there's a timeline, and, and it's as quick as we can do it.
Councilmember Mirish.
Thank you. So, I do wanna clarify that the Reagan quote that I parodied at that time was about, not a gate, but it was about a wall. And if you'll, if all, you'll all recall Reagan said to Gorbachev, "Mr. Gorbachev, please tear down this wall."
You're right. It was a wall.
And it was about the Berlin Wall. And I feel, then as now, that we can secure the high-school campus and make it a single-entry campus without it looking like East Berlin and without it looking like a prison. It can be done, and it should be done, and it must be done. Because think of the psychology of our kids who feel they're locked into East Berlin or something. Security, yes, but done in a rational way and in a way that makes our kids not feel like they're in East Berlin or in a prison. I do also want to, there were some comments made about Florida's Governor Rick Scott. And I, I just wanna say that, you know, he, he's advocating certain things. He's also advocating training and arming teachers. And of, of course, if you feel that more armed weapons protecting our kids in classes are better, then you might take the position, "Why not train and arm our teachers?" But in my opinion, that would be an awful suggestion for Beverly Hills. And I, I think the big difference is, is that Florida does not have the Beverly Hills police. Thank God we do. I, I think a lot of this is a distraction. And while we do, at the city, take terrorism and even the threat of thermonuclear war seriously in our preparedness plans, we really cannot and must not ignore ongoing, unaddressed, internal security issues, which in some cases are making our kids feel unsafe and traumatized now. And they have nothing to do with terrorism. Let me give you an example. At Horace Mann on Friday, it's something that my son had to unfortunately experience. And I have to tell you that my sense is, a lot of parents at Horace Mann don't feel very safe because there is a single point of entry, and it's enforced, and none of the parents are allowed on the playground. And so, we do, I think, many of us feel safe and don't feel that terrorism is the issue. But kids leaving class on Friday, coming to my son's mother and telling her how traumatized they were about two kids fighting and bloodying up each other without any adults doing anything to try and stop them. That's one example. And that's internal security. And that's something that you can and should and must, and should have been doing all along. That's a more serious issue right now. My, my son and many other kids are traumatized because of that, even though they do know about what happened in Florida as well. We also hear, unfortunately, and this is the source of dismay among parents, that I can tell you, that I've been in contact with, of such things that are almost unthinkable, as, as kids in an elementary school having sex in a bathroom, as children at the high school masturbating in class. These are nothing, have nothing to do with the police. These are not police issues. These are issues that concern supervision and the appropriate discipline that our administration and our teachers need to have on an ongoing basis. I, I'd say that the police are here to keep us safe, and they're here to help fight and solve crime, but they're not here to stop kids from fighting. In fact, adult supervision at the school should do that. At Horace Mann, nobody stepped in to stop that fight. Kids were not afterwards offered counseling or assured that this won't happen again. We got an email about the fun run, but no email about the incident trying to assure us and that this won't happen again. And that, to me, is a wrong focus. Again, it's not a police matter. And in fact, a good playground aide will do the trick. I have to recall, and Mel probably recalls, when I went to Hawthorne, fights were ended quickly and decisively because you did not mess with Mrs. Adler, Kreip, or Cohen. Kids were more afraid of them than they were of the police. And kids were even more afraid of the principal, Dr. Rowan. Now, I'm not saying our kids should be afraid of the principals, but there was a respect and there should be a respect. And that's something that we talk about, times changing, that doesn't and shouldn't change. Times changing also don't just mean bump stocks and AK-45s. Cyberbullying, for example, didn't exist before, and we've heard a comprehensive plan from our police, thank goodness, to deal with that. And that's something that we can do and should do in connection and in conjunction with the schools. But let's also not paint the past as a paradise. There were threats then as well. But as an example, I'm sorry to say, I, I'm disappointed in the response to the Horace Mann incident. I feel it was unsatisfactory. I think kids and parents were feeling unsafe because, in that case, of the lack of professional and timely response of what should have been avoidable situations. And I would ask you, please make that your focus. I understand everyone has an opinion about policing. I, I love watching the show Blue Bloods, and I sometimes think I'm Frank Reagan. But our police know best, and I'm convinced that they do. And, but, by not adequately addressing the, the problems that I mentioned before, we're all failing our kids. And our kids will not feel safe with 10 SWAT cops outside the school if we cannot assure that kids with known anger issues and kids who've exhibited bad behavior before are permitted to start fights with each other and are not separated. It's a fundamental school responsibility. And yes, as Noah said, it's also, very importantly, a parental responsibility. We all need to be aware of that, and we all need to take it seriously in dealing with our children. But when they're at, at school, they're the responsibility of the district. And on Friday, unfortunately, they failed my son. They failed some of the kids we saw here in the fifth grade earlier and other kids at Horace Mann. Our kids really deserve a bully-free environment and one in which we don't have to worry about kids masturbating in class, elementary school kids having sex in bathrooms, or 10-year-old kids beating themselves bloody with no intervention from adults. Please, if you do think that our police are competent, and I have full confidence, as the mayor said, in our police, then let the, our police do their jobs. And I'd urge you and beg you to please do yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan Saul?
Hello.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, sorry, Mr. Friedman.
No problem.
Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you all for listening and being here. One of the things I learned as an attorney, and I am a practicing attorney, is that when you go to an attorney, whatever the specialty is, whether it be trusts and wills...
you go to an attorney, whatever the specialty is, whether it be trust and wills or, or personal injury, you go to that person because you have confidence in their ability to carry out their job. I think similarly, what we need to do in this situation is just take a deep breath for a moment and let our police do the job that they do so well in our community. I have two grandchildren that go to Horace Mann. I am extremely concerned about safety in our schools. Those are the two most precious things in my life are my grandchildren. And if I thought that having an extra armed guard at a school would be, would make them more safe, then I would absolutely encourage that that be done. What the chief has set forth is a plan that needs to be implemented in conjunction with what the board has said they're going to do. And I think we need to take a look at that holistically before any further steps are taken in terms of what has been called SROs, but really, I think, are being called security guards. I'm not going to repeat some of the things that the mayor said. Our council is united on this issue. If the chief comes back to us and says that we need to have more police personnel there, we have already given that green light, but I think we need just to take a step back for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I called up, yes, thank you. Hello, welcome back.
Oh, yes. Always a pleasure. Two things. Let's not get carried away with the Rick Scott thing since, I think, because of some of his policies, that shooting actually took place, but that's neither nor there. And as a reminder, the best private security, you know, that we could probably bring over here, we need to do it without a low bid policy because it's government and we always will take the lowest price. So if you are going to go private security, let's make it about, you know, bringing in the best people and not the cheapest. And if we do do private security, I do believe that, uh, they should be trained with the Beverly Hills Police Department as well so that even, they're going to have different parameters of, of de-escalation, of preemption, and they need to be on the same page. So if there is an incident, if there is a shooting or a shooter on campus, that they are working in conjunction. Now, Blackwater was also a private security company that was vetted and they turned out to be pretty corrupt. So we need to really be careful about who we're putting on our campuses with guns. And I, I can't emphasize enough that they need to be working with Beverly Hills Police Department. So I'm here today for one reason, and that is a conversation I had with my son while we were watching the town hall. And he turned to me and he asked me, "You know, I'm not quite sure what our plan is in case there's an active shooter on campus." And I know we're talking about a three-pronged approach, parents, board, teachers, but I think we're forgetting the fourth prong, and that's the students. And I think if we can take anything away from what's going on at, in Florida, is that those students are very powerful. And I think at this point, we can say they may be revolutionary. We have student councils, you know, and it's not just about bake sales and it's not just about raising money so that they can go to, uh, from Ohio, I would say Cedar Point, but not Sperry Farm here. Those student councils, I think, should be brought into this process. It will, they need to have a voice here as well as, you know, in our, the security of our schools. The thing, my son, I think, is, is fairly smart and we talked about, yeah, they, they stopped timing. I can go on and on. I know, I know. I have to leave, so I'll, I'll be out of here in a second. But, um, going back to my son, uh, he, we talked about the, um, policy of run, hide, and fight. So I told my son that. And, uh, he goes, "Well, run where? Hide behind what? Fight how?" So if we're going to do these drills, and I think we need to, and I think we are way behind in doing these drills, we need to incorporate the students into those drills. There was a night line that ran about a week ago about, uh, a, a firm, I believe it's Comtech or something. You know, before we start putting private security guns, I think we should prepare our teachers and prepare our students and prepare our administrators to, on how to handle that situation if they are confronted with a shooter. Because that's, if that, if there is a shooter on campus, that is going to happen. Now, whether it's grabbing a three-hole punch, a stapler, a computer, or whatever it is, and when that person enters that room, just start throwing shit, excuse me, start throwing stuff at him or her, you know, they need to be prepared to do that. It's so important to involve the students. So it's preemption, which is, you know, you know, talking about bullies, uh, but not just some kid looking up rifles on the internet or reading a Mac Boland book, which dates me a little bit. But it is about really separating who's a kid gone astray a little bit being a bully and who's a kid who is a really serious threat to the community and not only the school, but the community. You know, a story came out today about the shooting in Florida where lives were saved kind of accidentally because it's a Florida school and they have hurricane-proof glass on the windows. If it were not for the hurricane-proof glass, they say about 20 to 30 more kids would be killed, would be killed. So that is the prevention part of it. And the prevention part of it, I think, also starts with the schools communicating with each other, which they don't. Horace Mann, El Rodeo, Hawthorne, Beverly Vista, they're all built differently, but they don't have, we don't have uniformed security. We're the Beverly Hills Unified School District. And in the unified is very, very important in this situation. Where, why does one school have a buzzer? Why does another school have cameras that work? Why does Beverly Vista have cameras on the outside of the school but not on the inside of the school? You know, everything should be uniform between these schools. And we're not doing our job. You were awesome. Like, uh, your pol, I, I wholeheartedly agree with it. I, I do think we should have police officers on the schools rather than private security. I just, I, there's something about private security that scares the hell out of me with things going wrong.
Mr. Saul, you got to tie it up.
All right, all right. I'm tying it up. I'm tying it up, tying it up. All right. Uh, there, and I'm done.
Thank you.
So, in conclusion, involve the students. That is so important in this process. It's four legs, not three. I've seen a three-legged dog run. It does not run fast.
Thank you.
There you go.
Is Melody Purion here? No? Okay. If she comes, she's welcome to speak.
I'm concerned. I need to have my name.
Yeah, you have to put in a speaker card. Melanie Forster? I can read, um, I'll read what Melody wrote. She took, you took, are you here, Melody?
I'm here, but I'm not Melody.
Okay. You're Melanie.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to read what Melody wrote. And then Melanie, you can go speak. It's going to take me just a moment. "I would like to discuss city funding schools. I have two kids at ER and I'm a graduate of ER in Beverly Hills High School. I'm so frustrated with how the city is spending their money. I would like to ask city of Beverly Hills and school board to come together to spend some of the city's tax money in order to fund school security. We truly need police at each of our four schools, especially ER where we are in the middle of construction as well. It's on the corner of Wilshire and across from two hotels. We need armed guards at all four schools, proper gates, cameras, and police on campus. Please do something. Let's get city council and school board together and keep our precious children safe." Thank you, thank you, Melody. Okay, Melanie Forster?
Thank you. I'm not sure, mine varies very much from anybody else's, but first I just want to recognize it's so nice to see everybody in a room together. Superintendent, Board, Chief, Chief, sorry, and the City Council. It's really nice to see that first step of us all coming together. So thank you. "I stand here before the Board, City Council, Chief, and Superintendent to tell you that I'm not being reactive and this is not hysteria. I've been fighting for the most basic security measures to be put in place at our schools for over six years, since Sandy Hook, and nothing has been accomplished. We've all been lucky that nothing terrible has happened in our schools, but we may not be so lucky in the future. As school shootings increase, our kids are left vulnerable. We continue to wait for a one-person entry system that was supposed to be implemented in 2013 at Beverly Vista. The high school waits for a temporary fence that was approved in October. We wait for perimeter covers that are not ripped and see-through at Beverly Vista. We wait for gates to have self-closing mechanism and working campus cameras. And we still have no SRO officers assigned to each schools. We need to work together as a team. Every month, the chief should be performing a walkthrough at all of our schools and presenting her report on all campus needs at a monthly safety security meeting with all of you present. Security issues should not be shelved and the ball should never be dropped. Everyone has to work together to protect our community, and right now, the system is broken. We beg for SRO officers or a sheriff while El Rodeo sits with a guard every day. We must provide all the schools with equal security. Until you get every security measure accomplished, you owe it to the community to have SRO officers or sheriffs in place at every school tomorrow. If something happens tomorrow at our schools, what will you say in your deposition as to why one school had a security officer and others didn't? And why a security officer that wasn't, that was supposed to be installed in 2013 was not in place? And why security cameras don't work at Beverly Vista? Our children, our children are vulnerable and our city is vulnerable to liability. Please work together to achieve monthly meetings, monthly walkthroughs, SRO officers tomorrow, single-entry point system, torn perimeter covers replaced, auto-closing gates, enclosed campuses, campus cameras that work. It's not rocket science. These are basic security measures. But please don't make us wait anymore. We can't wait for all the measures to take place. Chief, I ask you to please endorse a total of six SRO officers to each public school like all the other schools or like other school districts are implementing. I don't understand why you're turning down additional resources. I, I just don't. And I don't understand why the City Council doesn't act regardless. And I don't understand, I, I love your plan. I think it is great. And I love the adoptive school and I love that you have two SRO programs, but I don't understand why we can't put four more to that and what harm that would cause. I see that your plan could work well with adding four more officers. If the City Council and Chief won't budge, then I have to turn to the Board, although I would much rather have the BHPD, to bring in SRO sheriffs to provide additional support while all the other improvements are being worked out. We cannot wait any longer for all the improvements to be made. We ask that you take action tonight. Thank you."
Gabby Reams Alexander?
Good evening, members of the Board. I'm Gabby Reams Alexander, here with fellow Beverly Vista parents Rose Kaiserman, Arch Natuli, Cynthia Park, Lori Feinberg had to leave, and Hawthorne parent Kelly Schatz. We are here tonight to express our strongest support for and confidence in our police department and Chief Spagnoli. We appreciate how hard you all work to keep us safe and how much research you do on an ongoing basis to ensure utilizing the most current, most effective tools and procedures. We are also here to encourage our neighbors to allow the police to do their jobs as they see fit. They are the experts. And to presume to know better how they should carry out their responsibilities or to try to force them to operate differently from how they deem most effective seems quite dangerous. We look forward to partnering on the adoptive school program and the rest of the initiatives they are implementing. Tonight, we want the Board to commit to a firm date by which all of the campuses will be closed. A firm date. It's great that you're on it, that's not enough. We need to know when. At BV, this means installing one buzzed security entrance and a dedicated staff person checking IDs. At other campuses, it may mean fixing those that are not functioning. The last point we would like addressed is updating the student responsibility contract to include security school threat behavior that should be red-flagged. This must be very clearly outlined as to what behavior will not be tolerated and specific procedures and timelines that will be followed and reported. Each student must be required to review this contract and sign a document confirming the receipt of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Lasner?
Hi. I'm Leslie Lasner. I have three kids, um, at or who used to attend the Beverly Hills schools. Before this year, I felt kind of safe. At BV, we had lovely, a lovely principal and a vice principal who really cared about our school and the security. And at that time, it was okay. They regularly walked the perimeter of the school and they were a constant presence at the school. Unfortunately, in 2018, we're having an epidemic in school shootings and our security climate has to change with the times. I agree with the BHPD that the response time of our police department is unusually quick for a city. It's about two minutes. But I'm asking for additional security today because due to this epidemic, I don't want to rely on a quick response time to an incident. I want to avoid the incident completely. I want the Beverly Hills schools to implement different layers of security to prevent tragedies instead of responding to them. I also know that we haven't had a lot of high school kids speak. So I asked my son, who graduated a couple of years ago from Beverly High, and he's at UCSB now, um, and he just wrote a quick blurb today so I could speak to everyone. Um, this is from my son Jake. "I spent four years at BHHS and seven in the BHUSD. With the heightened attention to school safety and two younger siblings still in the district, I started thinking a lot about the safety systems that we have in place in our district. To anyone who has attended class at the high school, it's clear that the campus is severely vulnerable to an attack similar to those we have seen in the news. Firstly, our campus's exterior is not secure by any means. Students constantly flow on and off campus on a daily basis, using countless points of entry and exit. Unfortunately, a potential attacker has access to all the same points. While it's unrealistic to try to control every point of entry and exit on campus simply due to the layout of the school, it's essential to prepare an effective response to the potential attack. I firmly believe that any defense other than armed guards on the campus would prove ineffective. If someone were to begin an attack on the top floor of the Science Building, which I could get to on any given day, the only timely way to defend students would be with an armed guard that's already stationed in the building. Just think about all the damage that could be done if an attacker had the time that it takes for the police to be called, arrived, and make it to the top of the building. Unfortunately, while the guards currently at the school do a phenomenal job, it would take too long for them to drive over in their golf carts to get to the attacker. Unfortunately, many recent school shooters are people who attended the targeted school. If somebody with my knowledge of the layout of BHHS carried out an attack, the only reasonable way to defend students would be with an armed guard who knows the campus just as well as I do." So thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
And that's from a student. I think more students should speak to us.
We received a bunch of letters in our mailbox and we got some emails, all asking for armed security on the campus.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry. Good evening, Board members and Cabinet. And Mr. Bregge, I wanted to offer my condolences. I'm really sorry to hear about your father. I did not know that happened and that's, yes. I just wanted to come up here. I wasn't actually going to talk about security, but I do agree with Rose and the other lovely ladies who are up here that we should trust the experts. I'm always a fan of trusting the experts. I don't know everything. Um, I don't think anyone else pretends to know everything. And yes, we should trust their people in charge. But my actual matter of attention is, here, I have it written. "I am here to bring up the matter of the reinvestigation into Mr. Fuer and Ms. Para. As a parent at BV, I think I can speak for the majority of us that it was incredibly shocking and disruptive to have our administrative team pulled from us midway through the year. Currently, all we have to go on regarding the situation is what was reported in the Courier and rumors circulating around the district. This information is cursory and superficial at best and potentially defamatory commentary at worst. I do not pretend to know the details of the situation, and I understand that a good deal of the information is confidential, as it should be. But I do feel that as a community, the least we are owed are regular status updates on the reinvestigation and hopefully a resolution sooner as opposed to later. This request does not mean I am disparaging Mr. Regan or Mr. Hertz in any way. They have done a great, great job in stepping in during such a difficult time. But Mr. Fuer and Ms. Para have been in our district for many years, and for that service, let's please give them a fair reinvestigation and give the BV community, the majority of whom care about their well-being, these regular status updates." Thank you.
Thank you, Farah. Lisa Specter? Lisa Specter and someone seated you sometime.
Hi. I first want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a mother of five. Three of my children have already graduated from the high school and my youngest is a junior here presently. I'm aware that we have the same concerns regarding the safety of all of our students. I have spoken to security, Don Blake, Principal Mead, to Jody Galen, and to many parents and students since last week. I've also called the Board of Education twice. I've read and educated myself about our school safe plan. I really take this seriously and I really wanted to learn as much as I could before I presented any information. I want to start by describing last Friday, which was touted as what should have been the safest day on campus. In the morning dated February, in the morning at 7:04, we received an email from Principal Mead, a message from the police department. Quote, "We will increase police presence on the high school campus tomorrow. Your children are safe to attend school tomorrow." Signed by the police chief. However, in the morning, we have one parent who took video of her drop-off at 7 o'clock AM. There were no police present. That's documented. There was, there was police presence at the 8 AM drop-off time. At 12:05, I brought my daughter to school. There was no police present. When I drove around the school, the football gate was opened, which I think they call the gate for coach parking. Also, the gate at Olympic was open, which you can drive up and all the way through the school. At pickup, police were present. An, a parent who's not here to represent herself called the police department during the day and was told that there would be police present at pickup and drop-off and that was the plan. I really want to stress at this point that when things are said, it would really help us if we could, if there could be specifics. To say that police will be present or to say they'll be present at pickup and drop-off are two completely different things. And it affects our expectations and what our kids expect. I came to school later that evening. My daughter was helping with tech in the theater. The rehearsal was canceled because there weren't enough students present, but there were children here. There was supposedly an email sent by the teacher to administration saying that we'll have children there late. And oftentimes, there are high school kids here late into the evening time. I came to the theater. I drove around campus. I did not see any security guard entering from Olympic, all the way coming through the tunnel. I sat outside for 20 minutes. I went into the Solter Theater, walked through the theater, through the back door, which if you know by the band room, there is public access from the sidewalk, and then found the teacher with my student, Noah's student, and a couple other kids in the theater, completely In the past two days I've driven around, I know that the Olympic, when I spoke to one of the security guards, he said that that Olympic gate should be closed, that security has keys and other people who park there have keys. It was open last night after dark and I drove all the way through campus. So, these things aren't being done even the way they're supposed to be done. Okay. My main concerns are points of entry and, I haven't heard this mentioned, so everyone knows there is no working bell system or PA system in the theater building and there has not been for this year or last year. Students in that building are there for theater, tech, choir, band, orchestra throughout the school days, into the evenings, and on weekends. Let me tell you what that looked like in action during the lockdown drill last week. There was a drill. Where the system worked, classes stopped and doors were locked. Some classes, and I've heard this from children and other parents, some classes did not hear the alarm and teachers who don't routinely check their phones during a teaching period were not aware of the drill. In the theater building, we have no system in place. Fire, yes. No PA or bell system, otherwise. Someone walked, I'm hoping quickly, to the theater building from the main building to alert the teachers and students that there was a drill. To be clear, this is not a new problem. I believe this has not worked for all of, like I said, the two years. The three-pronged safety system that was just spoken about, actually, I continue to perform planned and unplanned school drills and disaster readiness teams, so we have a plan that's being presented to us that will not work in that building because there is no system in place. In the state of California, every school has to have a comprehensive school safety plan. Our latest one was adopted by the school site council, reviewed by law enforcement, and approved by the Board of Education. In section two of the disaster procedures, nine, on nine different pagers, pages just in this section, it is told about what should happen with a lockdown drill, with a shooting. In the lockdown drill itself, the first thing that happens is there's an alarm. Then we have an all-call. Then, so if you go through this, and I highlighted all of it, on nine pages, it's mentioned. We can't do any of that in a building where our students are. Again, I'm aware that there are plans to remedy these things. I am aware that it is being done in an urgent manner and I respect that. Until such time that this happens, I would like an interim plan in place. A person at each entry if there is not a closed gate. The gates, the locking of gates by security and others who have keys, that needs to happen. I was, like I said, I was told that it happened last night. I would like the fence put back by the band room which cuts off the open sidewalk access to the theater building. That, what, that fence was there at the beginning of construction and then taken down. Now, all teachers could have pagers for the sole purpose of communication regarding emergency situations. That could happen immediately. Using a cellphone, asking a teacher to use their cellphone to know when there's a problem is not acceptable. There are companies that supply large organizations such as hospitals and such with pagers for this very reason. Even with the security outside the theater building and teachers with pagers, we still have no timely way to alert students in that building who are not close to a teacher if there is a warning. We have no PA system to give direction. This is unacceptable. It has been unacceptable the entire time for our children and the teachers, part of their job being to protect the students. If I were given a by when, when this should have happened, if I were going to give one, it would be yesterday. We are lucky that nothing has happened. I believe we are not in compliance with our safe school plan that is filed with the California Department of Education, which requires that our school be in compliance with the safety procedures outlined under Senate Bill 187, and we are not taking care of our student population. Thank you.
Sharona Labeeb and then Rose Kaiserman and Lori Okum.
Good evening. Thank you, all of you, for all the time you've put into this and for the care you've given our students, our kids. I would not want to be sitting where you're sitting, by the way, any of you. I'll make it really quick. I want to know about metal detectors. If someone were to walk in with a single entry, with a gun, a weapon, they can't stop them. I want metal detectors. Has that been discussed? Is that in place? That's, that's my question.
Well, we've discussed it and I think it's something we should discuss with police and amongst ourselves and any consultants we eventually hire. Okay? So, I understand. Unless superintendent feels otherwise.
No, I, I think it's important to look at the research, look at, um, you know, how effective that actually is to have in our schools and, and be looking at other school districts that actually have metal detectors. Just important that, when you put a procedure like that in place, that it has the impact that it's designed for.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Lori Okum and Rose Kaiserman.
This'll be quick and mostly sweet. Most, most of you know us. I'm Rose Kaiserman. This is Lori Okum and we're kind of coming here representing the PTA since we are both PTA presidents and leaders in this community. We've been very fortunate to have had the opportunity to help serve our community. Do you want to say?
Just want to let you guys all know in the audience and watching that all your PTAs in conjunction with PTA council sent out emails to all your, to all, the entire school and we compiled lists and have presented it to our school board. We didn't want to come open and talk about every little detail, but in public. So, that's, everything that everyone has said has been conveyed. I want to just say really quickly, um, as a PTA president from the high school, that I want to give a round of applause to Mr. Mead, who has been so incredible and want you guys to know, to be totally transparent, at the beginning of the year was talking, and I know that we talked, Jackson had talked about it last year, but at the beginning of the year, talking to Jody and I, "We need a fence, girls, we need a fence." And he's been on it too. So, I, I just feel that some of the time we're talking about, um, I don't know, some of it feels like we're blaming and I think we all really have to work together and, and as fast as we can to get all these wonderful things in place. Okay, sorry.
Okay, no, not at all. Okay. So, Lorraine, unfortunately, Lorraine Eastman, who's my co-president, PTA council co-president, unfortunately is under the weather and couldn't be here, but we put this thing quickly together. Anyways, in the past week, we, the PTA leaders from all five campuses have been in touch with each other, like Lori said, and the PTA leaders have spoken to their principals and the schools have each comprised a list, as she mentioned earlier. And, no, and almost across the board, it seems like there are simple fixes and maintenance issues that needed to be addressed. If attended to in a timely manner, these could secure our campuses, which would help put our parents and children's minds at ease. We'd originally planned to read portions of the list here, however, since this meeting is publicized, we decided to err on the side of caution and not present all the weaknesses at each campus, however, unfortunately, some of them might have been already. We also understand, and I know you've touched base on this, but we did write that you were going to put a security fence with a single entry for the high school. We cannot thank you enough for this. We are, we are incredibly grateful for you working with Mr. Mead and I, I assume it's Don. Correct that will be our facilities manager who will be overlooking that. And, and here I was going to ask when the timeline is, but thank you, Dr. Bregge for, no, sorry, Dr. Spitz, Mel Spitz, for letting us know that it will be done while we are in spring break and should be done by the time the kids return. Lastly, what we wanted to say is that there seems to be a lot of confusion about who will be responsible for the implementation of these suggested security measures, which you will shortly receive from us if you haven't had so already. Parents want to know who will be the point person in charge of overseeing and implementing these safety issues and again, the timeline on which some of these security measures will be put in place. Thank you all. We are truly grateful for your time and continued support in helping us make our schools the best they can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then just, just also to, are we going to have an answer about the point person so that we can?
Dr. Bregge?
Right now, Mr. Hertz, who is also here in our audience, is, is somebody that we've been working with for safety and security and he's done a great job in the, in the district. He is in another role as well, so it's something my leadership team and I will be looking at. We want to review the same information that you provided the school board and we will communicate that information out. But if, if there is any point person right now for security, it's your building principal.
Okay, but for the fence, for the timing on the fence, so we can let, because the hundreds of emails.
We'll communicate that out as, as far as, you know, what the timeline is and, and what we're doing at the high school. We, we will communicate that out as a district.
Okay, thank you. Also, I know that people had mentioned students tomorrow. Right here, 6 o'clock, we have a presentation for sexual violence assault workshop, 6 o'clock for, and we did publicize it to all eighth grade students and up. We'd love to have any of you come. So, um, please know that the high school and, and all the K8s, I'm sure, are working really hard to get this information out. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Rosenberg and Jada Carraro? Jada, Jada? Jada, thank you. Okay, so those two?
I have 2%, so hopefully my iPhone gods are on my side. First off, I just want to say to this young man here, if our future is in your hands, I feel so good because you're so well-spoken and so well-thought-out. And I hope this board here really makes him a very active and important part of this conversation because he's spot-on. So, thank you, man. You're fighting the good fight. There's a security guard here. So weird. Can we talk about that for a second after? The pager idea is incredible. If we implement one thing, please, that sounds incredible. I urge everyone to think differently in this dialogue and act as if. What if I told you one of the kids is going to grow up to cure cancer? What if I told you that one of the kids in our district is going to grow up and cure Alzheimer's? What if I told you one of the kids is going to grow up and cure autism? What if I told you one of our kids is going to end world hunger? I think we think about things a little more differently and we'd be engaging probably in a slightly more productive dialogue. I think there are some things that we can immediately change. We got to lock the doors tomorrow. We have to install a buzzer tomorrow. We have to check IDs tomorrow. We should have a safety committee. I volunteer. We have to give better vis, better visibility inside the schools. It's gut-wrenching to know that there's cameras for Beverly Vista sitting in a room at some other school. It's not acceptable, guys. Someone's got to be accountable and let's just change. We need staff on-site tomorrow that are going to be able to lead the conversation and engage in a meaningful dialogue with all of our children from a mental health perspective, not only about gun violence, but just about life in general. We need consistent staff. At Beverly Vista, we have interim staff. Do you know the kind of message this sends to children? That they're not important enough to have consistent staff? It's important. We need to change that. There's three months left in the school year. Let's make it official. I lost everything else, but I think I was going to end with something like this. I don't envy your position. I think that you guys are in a very difficult position, but I urge you to be an example, not only for other school districts, but for our children, on how people with power and influence have the ability to effect immediate change. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jada Carrano. My son attends Horseman. And it's, it's really a question that I have, I mean, I sort of feel like we're really talking about bare bones and, and debating on it. Having, when we know that the response in these tragedies is really what makes the difference, response times. So, I'm not sure why we're debating. In fact, my question is a step further. What is our response knowing that usually in these situations, we're using assault weapons? And, and so, the police officer does not have an assault weapon. So, my question is, how are we adapting to that reality, considering that that really is, is what has been happening?
So, I think this is an important concept to understand and, you know, a sad reality that several years ago, we have armed all of our peace officers with assault rifles, including your school resource officers. So, when you talk about response times and you talk about responsibilities of our school resource officers, our school resource officers, our adoptive school officers, our police officers on the street have a responsibility to immediately diffuse the threat, but they also have to protect themselves for the ability to diffuse a threat. Bringing a handgun to an assault rifle fight is not equal. So, your school resource officer has her equipment, has her heavy-duty vest and also her ballistic helmet in her vehicle. And so, responding to a threat, you know, has to have that accessibility. The officers on the street, the adoptive school officers who are near their vehicles have those accessibilities. And so, when we talk about school safety and the response times, I think it's important to understand the practicality of how we respond as police officers. I do want to give clarity to also hours that, on Friday, that we committed to being on the high school campus. We were on the high school campus. Originally, we were told seven. Howard wrote me an email and also the mayor at 6:45. And our officers were on campus as early as 6:15. This is a very large campus and so, we had undercover officers, detective, and also our visible police officers. We had up to seven police officers. officers here by 6:45 in the morning. And we had our school resource officer handling issues in and out of the campus all day. And then, we had the response at night. So, you know, our, our sergeant responded in full force in the morning to make sure we had visibility. But they're right, we weren't everywhere on campus. And you had seven police officers and still people didn't see our peace officers. And so, as we have that dialogue, that's, that's an ongoing discussion.
Thank you, Chief. Tamar Seth, and then Jenna Frankel.
Thank you all. Thank you for listening. Thank you to the chief for her thoughtful plan. I just have to agree with Mr. Margot and Mrs. Korbitov that more is more. It is a thoughtful plan, but more is even better. That is my opinion. I'm a parent of a fourth grader and a sixth grader at Beverly Vista. So, Beverly Vista and the high school are my top priorities. And I appreciate the timeline on the fence at the high school. Can we get a timeline on securing the entry to Beverly Vista? And that's my question.
I just want to say that I was at Beverly Vista with, on a security walk on Friday, Dr. Breggy, and it became very apparent that people just walk in and they go through the office. And the two secretaries there and whoever's around there is so overwhelmed, as every front offices. And the kids are there and parents are waiting to pick up kids, and there's sick kids, and, you know, all kinds of stuff going on. You know, it's too late to talk about the design, but we need a wonderful, thoughtful, on top, you know, really on the ball person at that front door. It's, it's just, I was there for about an hour and a half and it was, was unbelievable. Just everyone walking in and out. So, if we could do something fast, that would be a huge help right away.
Okay. And, and I heard that as well. And that it's, there's, there's nothing that's more of a high priority right now than this. But I, but I also want to be really careful and not say something that is, that I can't follow through on. So, I reviewed, we walked the campus yesterday. I see what you're saying about the buzzer. I don't know the technicalities of that. You know, adding a staff is, is another piece to this. But we have to put it all together. And I want to make sure it's comprehensive and that we're looking at all of our schools too and not just selecting one. But it's the highest priority that we have right now.
Thank you.
Hi, Jenna Frankel. So, I want to tell you, I, I love our police department. They're amazing. I think the plan is great, but it's just not enough. I want to tell you guys how I ended my week last week. Picked up my kid at Horseman, who came screaming that she had to run to the principal because a fight that started in a classroom ended up with a kid punching another kid. And then, Thursday morning, not Friday, I got a call from a kid who is not shaken a lot, hysterical, that someone's going to come through the EDC and kill her. The rumors that were spread, all the stuff that was going on with this particular kid that was, and we talk about educating our kids and making everything better. If they're not safe, or even perceived they're safe, none of it really matters. So, she told me all the ways you can get into campus, all the things. And I, I know that one entry point is, and closing a campus is a great idea. It doesn't solve all the problems. Logistically, it will be a nightmare. But I agree that we need to do it. But I think it's a great start. Oh, sorry, just on the presentation, sorry. So, how will that work at an entry point? What happens with the JPA after? I have a kid playing soccer right now here. How's that going to work at night? She's 10. To have her play on the fields, anyone can get in and out. So, our adoptive school program with an officer sounds terrific. They'll be accessible. But the problem is, they're not actually on the campuses. So, I think it's a great start, but I think we also need an SRO, a police officer, whatever you want to call them, but someone on each campus. The schools that have used, I looked at a little research on the adopt and school program, they're not really communities like ours. They're bigger, have less resources. We put lights up on Robertson. I know the funding's different, but we have to throw money at this problem and we have to throw it yesterday. We're Beverly Hills. They care about our peanuts. We have to care about our kids. So, I couldn't find a lot of information about the successes of the adoptive school program, as many as I could find about the amazing SRO programs. And I'm happy that, again, I'm happy to take it, but we just need more. From what I understand, with adoptive school programs, the officers are the ones that are patrolling those particular areas. So, what happens when they're on a call? Are there less calls going on right now that we have a lot of extra time, that they can come to schools? Or will they have to triage what's important? And that becomes a difficult question. And if one's assigned to each campus in addition to this, then we already have boots on the ground. How many incidents occurred, my question is, at the five schools where the police were contacted last year? And how does that differ from when we had five SROs on campus? I don't know if you have that information accessible, but I'd be curious. And if funding isn't an issue, if this is something that's important enough, if the board says, if the city council says, is it something that we can do? Because right now, I have a kid that doesn't feel safe going to school. And she loves school. And that's not okay. That's not how this should work, especially in Beverly Hills. And it's the reason we come here. It's the reason we stay here. It's the reason we are multi-generationally through here. So, if the SROs are put on campus, or a police officer, not a private security guard, because that causes issues maybe for you guys, can we try it out and see if it doesn't work? I feel like our district is, our city and our district is constantly reacting. Can't we be proactive? Can't we do something first? And if it doesn't work, or it's not needed, pull back instead of going forward and seeing when there is a problem, like waiting for a problem. I just feel like, like Noah said, it is parental responsibility. I'm responsible for my kid and my kid isn't going to be a problem. But I can't be responsible for someone else's kid who might be. And I know that a lot of this stuff is confidential and everything, but when my kid has an issue, I take care of it. But a lot of people can't, won't do anything about it. Just please be proactive. And, and our kids' safety isn't something we can mess around with. It's more important than anything else. And just a couple of things about the SRO programs that I've read. And again, you are the experts. And I love that you want to do something and we need it 24 hours a day. And I understand we have limited options, but maybe this is a program that takes priority. Or maybe there's a way to do it so we don't have to have private security. Maybe there's a way to do it where it can, however it needs to be done, it needs to be done now. But the programs also, SRO programs also bring in, they bring educators, students, and officers together. They result in officers increase feeling of students and teachers. They deter aggressive behavior, empower staff to maintain order and address behavioral issues in a timely fashion, diminish classroom time spent on discipline and behavioral disruptions, improve safety in the school, and reduce school-based crime, increase the likelihood that student report, students will report witnessing a crime, and help reduce community-wide criminality. It'll also improve the, the relationships between law enforcement and the citizens. Please add police to each campus and please add them now. We talk about being safe and feeling safe, and both are super important. It has to be done now. The kids have to feel safe in addition to being safe. And it's really important for us as parents to not be calming our kids down from an incident that could have happened, might have happened, would have happened. Our kids think like that. We need to just make sure that nothing happens. And this is our best policy to ensure that nothing does. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Allison Whitner, Greg Bell.
Thank you. My name is Allison Whitner. I've sent six of you emails. I got one response. I sent many emails. I'm here because I'm very upset to find that our PA system, bells and alarms do not work. They don't work effectively. They don't work throughout the campus. They aren't checked regularly. And the fact that you're just figuring this out at a drill last week is appalling and outrageous. I know you have a lot on your plate, but that those aren't checked regularly is really outrageous. The bells need to be checked. They need to be tested weekly. And someone needs to have it on their job district, job description. In addition, students need to be armed in some capacity with notice, especially if the bells and the PA systems aren't working. You have connections. Connect to their cell phone. You send us robo-calls on our voicemails. You send us emails. Connect to the kids. They have those attached to them like they're part of their body. They need to know if something is going awry. They need to know how to respond. They don't know how to respond because the drills are ineffective. You don't have enough drills. There are kids screwing around during the drills. And even the teachers don't know when the drills are occurring. Last week, drills went off and teachers did not hear about them. A woman walked the classrooms or walked the hallways to say, "Drill." That is not a drill. And according to Lisa Speck, it's a violation of whatever programs you have submitted to the state. Those need to be addressed. They can be addressed immediately. And to say the alarms are being looked at now or this week, should have been done yesterday, needs to be fixed tomorrow. You have to give our kids a chance to fight back because it is inevitable. It may not be inevitable in the campuses, on the campuses now, but maybe it's inevitable at the colleges they attend. So, you need to teach them how to fight and flight. What they need to do, they need training on. You need to have the professionals come. You need to have victims of prior attacks come and talk to them. You need to have the police involved. They need to know what to do because they don't know what to do. They just know sometimes a bell goes off and there's giggles and a non-response. So, please take action. Please take it now. They need their safety and they need to rely on you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm very pleased to see that it's clear to me the community's speaking tonight, and that's wonderful to see. As a member of the community, I applaud everybody for showing up tonight. It's fantastic to see. I didn't really expect this tonight when I came. I just know that I, sometimes when I come at seven o'clock, they break the meeting to allow me to speak. So, I'm pleased so many people were here to speak before. And I want to talk about a personal experience that I had here on February 16th, two days after the massacre. I drove in next to the Science Center building and was greeted by a fully opened gate. And to the right side of the south lane of the gate, a security guard sat in his golf cart facing the street. He was not blocking or stopping traffic, nor in a position to do same. I stopped, but I could leave, I could have just as easily drove past the security guard and waved. When I rolled down my window, his first question to me was, "Who was I going to see?" And I told him. He then asked me if I knew where to go, and I said yes. He asked if I knew where to park, and I said yes. He then fumbled around looking for a badge to give me, which he didn't have. Without gathering my name or any other information about me, he allowed me to proceed. And he, or his partner, were going to meet me in the parking lot where I would get a badge. I went to the lot and found parking. And as I was walking away from my car, approximately two to three minutes after accessing the campus, the gate guard drove up with another guard in his cart. The guard who was not at the gate asked my name and wrote down the date, time, and my first name only on the badge, which was not identified with a number or any other marker. And I kept a copy of it. And I want to pass this around. I want to show it to the chief, members of the city council as well. They left. I moved on. Here are the lapses as I see it, and I'm sure there are more. At no point was I asked to provide ID. At no point am I aware of anyone writing down or photographing my license plate number. At no time did anyone confirm my appointment or radio contact the front office to notify them I was on campus. At no time was I directed to a designated check-in point. At no time I was asked, was I asked to sign something confirming a badge number or otherwise. All I was asked was my name, nothing more. I could have easily lied. Everyone coming onto the campus must be considered a potential threat. That includes a white guy driving a nice car. Security cannot allow complete strangers onto the campus like they allowed me. There must be, and I haven't heard this yet tonight, procedures and protocols for allowing people to come on campus. Surely, our chief of police or this, or the captain can put this in place quickly and cost-effectively. It's training, it's supervision, not much more. Whoever is managing and supervising our guards right now and instilling the protocols must do a better job or be replaced. And if protocols exist and are not being followed, people must be held accountable. I urge the board and the superintendent and the principals to address this matter immediately, like tonight. You are fiduciaries to this community. Security is the number one item on any agenda. We are fortunate not to have a massacre, not yet, and hopefully never. Take steps. Please, make change happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. The last two speakers are Lisa Shagian and Sam Storm.
My name is Lisa Shagian and I have ninth grader in high school. I know there was an event last Thursday night. And my daughter and I think hundreds of other kids were going crazy. And I wasn't getting any response from anybody. The parents were calling me, were all concerned what to do. So, I called the police department to find out if they had any news of this threat that these kids were talking about. And they told me that they knew about the threat and that they're working on it. Then I get a text from the school that everything's okay. They've talked to 100 people with no other detail, and that it's safe for my kid to go to school the next day. Obviously, my daughter was distraught and she refused to go to school. Her comments was, "My, my life is in danger and I refuse to go to school. It's not worth it to go to school, my life or school." I mean, it, it brings me to tears thinking that a 14-year-old has to worry about this. And we were not given, and then the school texted us that you can go to school. And more than half of the school was not here. I know that for a fact. And I decided that I cannot trust you guys to tell us what to do with our kids, unfortunately. The fact that you talked to 100 people is not sufficient. I needed to know more detail before I sent my daughter to school, knowing that, you know, this is her life. And I just want to know, at what point are you going to close the school? I know that there was a public school that had a threat. They were closed on Friday, a private school. I know three other public schools that were closed last week because of threats. And this threat was pretty serious, from what I recall. And you decided to keep the school open, which was, in my opinion, worthless because nobody showed up. But the fact of the matter is, what if I don't know about these threats? And you guys just decide that you want to keep the school open, for whatever reason you used to, to keep that, the school open on Friday. And then dealing with it the whole weekend, and then having to deal with it Monday. I had to beg my daughter to come to school. Every morning, she does prayers before she comes to school. She doesn't know if she's going to come back home. You guys don't understand the severity of this. And they have no help here in school. She's not told that everything's going to be okay. Even the drills are scaring the hell out of her because she has no clue what's going on. She just knows that the drills are there to probably help, but they're not. And another issue is that you guys are talking about guns. These kids have access and can make bombs easier than guns. What are you going to do about that? How can you tell us that these little kids will not be able to bring a bomb to school? I'd like to know, what are your plans? And when are you going to close the school if, if there is a threat? And what is a threat to you guys? What is a threat? I don't know if you have 14-year-olds, but to me, that was a pretty substantial threat, from what I saw on the web. And I don't know. I just, there's absolutely no trust from the kids to the school, to this whole community, unfortunately.
Okay, we're, the board members want to address some of the comments after Mr. Storm.
Mrs. Korbitov, before Mr. Storm speaks, I don't know if all of, all of you on the board...
Mrs. Korbitov, before Mr. Storm speaks, I don't know if all of, all of you on the board know that Mr. Storm is a school grandparent, but he is also a, an expert in the field of security. He has spent a lifetime in this field of security. So I just wanted you all to know that.
Well, I've had over forty-five years of security plus. I've been a reserve with the sheriff's department, part for close to twenty years as a reserve. And part of it was in crime prevention. Now, I'll get right to the point because it's getting late. From what I could see, I think the plan is great. I don't believe that security people cannot be trained by the police department. Their job is to observe and report. Most of them who go through the security class, and I used to teach one of those classes. It takes a two-day course. And after two days, they could wear a gun. It's a big liability. People spend $5,000 on a refrigerator to protect $200 with the food. But when it comes to security, nobody wants to do anything until after the fact. Now, I've been talking about security in Beverly Hills. Actually, about five years ago, I even donated two metal detectors that they could use when they have their parties and so on. Nobody knows where they're at. But I, I think it's almost impossible for the kids to go through metal detectors, the amount of kids that we have, and do that properly. The best program we have is the program you suggested. And I think security guards are, are, you know, I'm totally against that. I mean, I could talk about that for quite a while. I used to have a big company with security guards. We used to patrol, we had guards, we had even a detective agency. I sold it in eighty-nine. Now, when it comes to fences, there's fences that, that you could build that people can climb over and they can only be four feet, six feet. You can make them up to eight feet. Chain link fence, unless you have what they call smart cameras that are designed, you program in such a way that they don't appear on the screen. Nobody's watching them. But if somebody's trying to climb over the fence or does something they're not supposed to do, it'll automatically appear on the screen. Just like if somebody leaves a package on Rodeo and it sits there for over fifteen minutes, I think it'll appear on the screen. You know, that's what they call smart cameras. I'm not talking about cameras that could detect movement or anything like that. Now, nothing's going to be done overnight. If you, if you rush through it too fast, something's going to go wrong. The fences have to be designed properly. The doors have to be designed properly. You have to have backup on any kind of electricity you're going to do on the security system. And so I just want to get right to the point. But doing what we have right now, from what I could see, you can't do any better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, yes.
Mrs. Chair, may I, may I just close before you start a discussion? And it's just really a commitment to work with Dr. Bregy and your staff to be transparent in this process. And please let us try our plan. We've had many discussions. I have, I am not set against if something doesn't work. I'm very transparent and have been very transparent with you and the board when we make mistakes or something's not right. And I'm committed to fixing it and making things right. But I just want you to know that we feel and are very confident about our plan. And we will meet with your staff and be very transparent in the process.
Okay, thank you, Chief. More comments from board members? Just, we don't have to go in the horseshoe, just speak up.
More requests to speak? We're done?
I think we're pretty much closed, yeah.
I, I, nothing to add for now. I know there were a number of comments about students getting involved. I was planning on getting into that later during the board report. I can get into that pretty extensively. I will say that students are taking a very active leadership role in this process. You know, I've said from my very first day on this board that students need to be the drivers of change in this district, that they're the biggest stakeholders here and they're the people whose voices need to be represented. And so they're planning a number of events. I'll discuss that during the student board report. I don't want to take that time here.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
So I, I want to respond to, or I want to ask a question of our staff because we are board members. And I am a little frustrated because I would, we are, at the end of the day, we are responsible for this district, as many of you have said. So Dr. Bregy, I think it's, it's, it's really important that we have some answers with deadlines to some of these questions that have been asked about, that have been asked of us today. I know that we have information that has been already shared with us about the fence, but we need to know, what about the other schools? We need to finalize and be transparent with people and explain, how long is this going to take? How fast is it going to go? And what schools will be prioritized? I think we talked a little bit about the P A. System, Mrs. Whitner, before you. I think you came a little late. And we do have a plan for that. But I want to be able to give dates specifically to the community because I think it is not acceptable to continue to, to, to operate this way. To Mayor Bossi, I think your point is well-taken that you have given us very specific, a very specific program with deadlines and expectations. And there's room for improvement should the chief decide that we need to move forward and expand in that program. But by that same notion, I think this board needs to also do the same when it comes to the bells and the whistles of our, of our campuses. So I'm not sure how fast we can do this, if we can, if we need to, if your staff needs to convene. I'm assuming some of that has already taken place. But I don't think that we have those, that, that specific information clearly delineated so that we can share with the community. And I think it's really, really important to do that, so.
Just to respond, I do think it's important that, you know, there's some things that I know some of us have heard for the very first time. And so I think it's important before we just start pushing out dates that, that we do have a comprehensive plan, that we can push out, that we are confident that we can, that we can meet those guidelines. I, I want to be very careful about not just, you know, being responsive and pushing information out without really talking to everyone involved in getting all of this information. It is the highest priority. And we've, we've pushed it there. It should be there. There, there's a lot of information that I, that it didn't, security just didn't start now. I mean, we've, we've had security. We've had really great lockdown drills. I've seen them personally. We have an excellent, excellent relationship with our police department, the best that I've had in my entire career. And I know that that will continue. We do speak daily about the type of threats, the information, the evidence. We do that daily. And we have to consider also, and this happens throughout the country, is, is, you know, overreacting as well in closing a school. And while it's important to really know the information and talk to the professionals, there's a lot of intelligence. We know a lot of the students, so does the police outside in the community. But that's a pretty big decision to do that because it creates a lot of the copycatting and a lot of the, you know, there are school districts across the country that they, when they start closing schools at every threat that they get, then they're overreacting. So we, we just have to find what that, that balance is. And it's important to us. And, you know, there are things that sound like they're excuses, but I, I know that when things are reported to us, and we had bells and P As that were reported that were not working three months ago. And we had a company come in and replace those. And so we have such an old system that, that, that many of these things are breaking as, as we go. But I think what was brought up, things like doing regular checks and having a comprehensive plan, that way we don't wait until we have a drill before we find something out. But there's just been a lot of ongoing work that we're doing. It just, I just want to remind people that we've been doing drills. They've been effective. Our teachers have been very good about working with their students. I've been personally in our schools while lockdown drills have been happening. But there's certainly work and improvement that, that can occur.
Anyone else would like to make a statement?
Yeah, I just want to ask Dr. Bregy, if, if by the meeting on March thirteenth, unless we call an open meeting before that for any reason, would it be possible to get an update on these components that we spoke about tonight? The single-point entry, any controlled access, P A. Systems and the alarms at all five campuses?
Absolutely. I was, I was thinking along the same line because I'd like to be able to, you know, I tried to write down every single question that I could. I want to meet with, with my team, the leadership team. And we can review the, the tape just to, because I want to make sure that we are able to collect all of that data so that when we give you a report that includes everything that we heard tonight.
Right. And it's, it's, I know it's difficult to give deadlines. We're bound by, by certain contract codes that we have to go out for procurements in certain ways. And if we could go out and start the work tomorrow, we absolutely would, where we can't. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. But I, I think that it's fair that we be honest about what that procurement is and, and, and when things can be done.
Yeah.
And, and we will absolutely do that.
Because there's also, I believe there is times when you can override certain parts of that based on necessity and extenuating circumstances, security being one of them.
Correct. But it's, it's finding the right people to do it. I, I don't want to hire an electrician to put a buzzer on a door if it, it's not going to be effective. And, and we've got some pretty old facilities that are, are, are difficult to navigate and difficult to incorporate some of our newer technology in. So there's just a lot of challenges. But I think it's fair that we let you know if there's a challenge putting in a buzzer into, you know, a fifty-year-old door.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, I guess we'd also like to understand there was a lot of concerns about the security team at the high school. And I just would like, I know we don't want to discuss certain parts of that in public, but between Principal Mead and the office to make sure we tighten down the, batten down the hatches with that.
Sure.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, just want to let the community know that in the last few days, obviously, Dr. Bregy's been out of town. On Friday, the board went ahead and had a securities consultant come through, do a walkthrough of all five campuses, again with Dr. Bregy on Monday, that with a different consulting firm, that same walkthrough occurred so we can compare notes as to what we need. We've also authorized our facilities department, who's working directly with another security firm. And when I say security, I'm not talking about guys, just a security guy with guns. These are, these, it has nothing to do with that. This is about our campus, our facilities, locking down our facilities, making them close campuses. So in the last three days, we've had three separate consultants come in and look at this issue because that's our primary issue. And it's, it's really an issue between safety, which is kind of that warm fuzzy that you all want to see, and actual security. And actual security is layered, and that takes some time. So when either my colleagues or, and I understand the frustration. I'm a parent in this district too. And a lot of these disconnects are very disconcerting because a lot of times, and it sounds ridiculous when you hear, gee, it's the first time the board's hearing about it, but some of the stuff we are, and it's very disconcerting to hear. And so we've acted as a board, we've given direction, we've acted upon it. There are things happening immediately. There will be other things that are layered. When it comes to real security, you know, we can give you the warm fuzzy. That's not going to make anybody safe. It's not going to make anybody secure. It takes a little time. We do have a plan in place to get that security fencing up. And of course, is it the type of fences, chain link? Is it, you know, there are dozens of types of fences, you know? But to serve our purpose, what we need in an interim, because we are under construction as well. If you recall, this board over the last two years did discuss security. We did discuss fencing. What we wanted to see is a secured campus. What our architects brought back was that permanent wall that really can't be put in place for the next five, seven, ten years. That didn't serve our purpose. Though some of those individuals are no longer with this district. We have gone ahead and directed the superintendent, and we're taking steps to address this. As Dr. Bregy says, when we walk through, and Dr. Bregy was there on Monday with the security company, just, just fixing a gate or a door, it, it, it's multi-layered. And I know the chief talked about it quite a bit. It doesn't happen overnight. This plan wasn't devised a week ago. This plan has taken months, from what I understand, to get to this point. And we're still waiting for the implementation. So there is some caution when you talk about security. And to give you, somebody mentioned about that text that went out and why did we keep the school open? And, you know, interestingly enough, there was a posting on social media that there was issues with. We immediately threw Dr. Bregy, who was in Chicago at the time, dealing with his issues, and board members out the wazoo, contacting the, the chief of police, saying, "Can you confirm whether this is a credible threat or not?" The, the police took, they didn't say no immediately. They said, "Let us look into it." They spent a few hours. They got, better part of the day, they got back to us, says, "No, there's no credible threat. You can have your school open tomorrow. We will provide law enforcement for you." And that's why the school remained open. On, everybody talks about trusting the officers and the expertise. That's a time that we had to make a decision as a district and primarily Dr. Bregy, who's a couple thousand miles away, relying on our police department to say, "Hey, we're going to listen to the experts. It wasn't a credible threat. Your children will be safe. We're going to beef up the police presence." Now, there's been a lot of anecdotal information as to whether they were on campus, not on campus. I think part of the disconnect, and something I probably should have mentioned earlier to the chief, I live in the neighborhood and my wife goes and leaves. She's a school teacher at another district. She leaves at seven o'clock. She saw some of the officers pulling up at seven. There was an officer there a little bit earlier, apparently. The problem is, when I got out and I walked my dog in the neighborhood, there were six officers stationed within fifty feet each other at the swim gym with four patrol cars there. I actually went over to the officers, had a little discussion to ask about, would it have been, and I'm not an expert, better deployment to have an officer or two over on Durant and Moreno, where eighty percent of the drop-off odds, just, and that's, that's more so of the safety aspect where parents would see the officers. I didn't get a response from the officer. I didn't expect one. It was just, it was just information that I inquired as a parent in the community. And say, "Why is there six officers deployed on one site?" And they were there for quite a while. And yes, there was a patrol car. So there was a presence. But as parents, we also don't understand security. I'll be the first one to admit, I don't have a security background. So there's apprehension. There, and I think you're feeling that tonight from the parents. You're seeing, you're feeling that from the board. But we as trustees have a duty to do everything we can to protect our students. And there are four thousand students in this district. They're all resident, for the most, they're all residents of Beverly Hills. They're, they're also in your charge as well. And I think that's what we need to work through, combined with police and school, through, through the superintendent, through, through the, through the council, to, to, to foster a plan, which you've brought to us, which everybody, you know, with nobody being security experts, all profess, yes. Until we see it implemented, we don't know. I think the apprehension is, until we actually see it a no, we would be more comfortable as a school district, as parents, to see some type of policing that's at the campuses, even if it's for a few weeks, a few months, if that's possible. If it's not possible, then we as a board have to have a, a very difficult discussion. Not talking about security officers, but talking SROs, people that can interact with our faculty or students, you know, to give them a sense of comfort and to give them a sense of, I think you're hearing, you know, security from a standpoint that they can focus and do what they need to do as students. And when they're sitting there worried about what may happen to them, they can't study, they can't learn. And that's a problem for all of us as a community.
Thank you. You know, I don't have a background in security, but as part of the job I do with management in downtown areas, we employ L A. P. D. Off, they're off-duty at the time, but they're currently badge. And they're, you know, in regular clothes, plain clothes. And we have them seven days a week patrolling the most high-dense areas of the fashion district. When they're not there, it's a real problem. When they're there, it's a lot better. So I have some experience understanding what that means. So it, you know, I, it's a difficult thing for me to have to say this because, you know, I, I like, I, I, I really want to be very respectful. But, and I'm going to maintain being very respectful. I understand there's some frustration with certain people in the council that think that we have to blindly accept what we hear from professionals. And I want to do that. But I have an obligation as a fiduciary to also take all my life experiences and all my gut instincts and all that I see and all that I read and filter that and, and process that through what I'm hearing. When Parkland happened, the F B I. Was called over twenty times, thirty times, eighteen times. I don't know, it was over two dozen times, and they missed it. over two dozen times, and they missed it. Someone called the FBI office in New Orleans because he was a blogger and Nicholas Cruz, he told him, and they missed it. They didn't even Google Nicholas spelled with a K. We're hearing this all over, we're reading this. The Broward County sheriffs missed, they went to the home 36 times, 18 calls. Our police are phenomenal. I know that couldn't happen here. I'm positive it couldn't happen here. I know when I call them, they're here. As a resident, I know that. But maybe those school board members had a false sense of security. The FBI didn't say anything, Broward sheriffs didn't say anything. The school board had a bad policy they had adopted, the superintendent had a bad policy. I've done a lot of research on this policy. That kid was in the school doing very, very bad things, saying and doing, and it was tolerated. I hope we would not do such things. Kids knew this kid was a threat, so when you see something, say something, yes, but then you have to do something. And the adults there failed, that student population. They failed. So I have tremendous more faith in my chief of police, and I believe that my police are superior. I'm positive they are. And I think my council is a whole lot smarter than that council. And I think this school board is a whole lot more heightened on this awareness than maybe that school board. But I still have a duty to process all of this and come up with my, with what I think is probably best. And I'm going to say it again. I love your program and thank you. But what Jennifer Enkel said was resonated with me. Give me all the resources, and then you can parse some of it away if you think it's overkill. But I'd rather err on the side of caution. I'd rather err on the side of more. Because I don't think there's room for error. I read a parent who said, we paid a blood price. I don't want to pay a blood price. Nobody in this room does. Lily Bossy is right. We all love our schools. We all love our children. We all love the city we live in. I have no doubt. We're all here for ours because we do. And even though I appreciate what I'm hearing, I respectfully have to disagree. I want more. And that's just how I feel. And that's just what my life experience tells me, my intuitions. I just want more. I know what I've heard people say, if someone really wants to come in here, they're going to get here. But you have to put up every single barrier, every single deterrent humanly possible. Someone may want to do a home invasion. You have gates, you have lights, you might have a dog, you have alarms, you have security lights, motion sensors, you might even be a legal owner of a gun and trained to use it. You put up many rings and many layers of deterrence and of safety. This is what I'm asking for. We have to do our part. We are remiss. We have to have buzzers and bells and PA systems. And the buildings are 100 years old, Allison. They're barely standing. That's why we needed a bond. That's why we'll need the next bond. Be mindful of it. You can't do this without enough money and manpower. I agree. I heard the drills did not go well last week. I heard the same as you heard from parents. We have room for improvement. The onus is on us to prove to you that you can trust us with your children, and the staff should trust us. I promise and pledge to do better and do more. But as much as we have to fence off and fix everything, I need, as one board member, I hope we can get the votes to put more protection in the name, in the main, in the form of a human being, you know, armed security. And I hope it's Beverly Hills PD. But if it's not, I'm not going to, you know, back off of this. I'm only one person and one vote, but that's how I feel. So we've exhausted this discussion. We'll be back here on March 13th with another open on it and a closed. We're going to have another closed, I believe, about this, maybe next week, Dr. Breggy. There'll be more information you'll bring to us.
Definitely.
Would it be possible, if next March 13th, we give Don Blake a heads up, that he can be here to talk about all those things that we're going to be getting up and running?
Absolutely.
Okay, he just had another, he couldn't get out of the appointment?
I understand.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for being here. And we're not done with this event, this evening, but we're not done with the subject. I just want to also mention Sabrina Gallardi and sent in some Rosa Gutierrez, and there was a petition for Ms. Gordon, petition to save Ms. Gordon, signed by a lot of students and maybe staff, I don't know. Thank you. Okay, we're on to, do we want to take a five-minute break? You want a no break? That's fine, no break. You folks are calling the shots. Okay, you hit it, Mr. Margot.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Any, anything polled? Nothing's polled?
No, nothing polled.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Margot made the motion. Who seconded?
Mr. Spitz.
Mr. Spitz. All in favor. Thank you. Okay, we're going to the superintendent's report, but I think you gave it, right? Or sort of, kind of?
Yeah, I want to respect everyone's time, but I just want to congratulate again Hawthorne Middle School for being re-designated again as a school to watch, and they will be awarded a very nice plaque, and it's a very distinguished award in the state of California, and that will happen on Thursday and Friday of this week.
And you're going to be up in Sacramento with Mrs. Hacker, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I bought my ticket, yes.
Good. Enjoy and safe travels to and fro.
Board member report, Jonathan. Thank you. Yeah, there are a number of student events in the next week and two weeks, one of the busiest weeks of the year. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our girls' basketball team for the second year in a row. Yes, yes. For the second year in a row, our girls' basketball team has made it to the CAF finals. They won last year. They're about to win it again this year, Saturday at 6:00 PM. You know, also like to congratulate the boys' basketball team. They made it to the corner finals, didn't go as far as they'd hoped, but still a very strong finish for their season.
Good for them.
Yeah, definitely. Also, our spring musical is coming up. It's the Drowsy Chaperone. It has a number of showings, March 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 9th, and 10th at 7:00 PM. And then there's also a matinee on March 7th at 2:00 PM. So there are, you know, one of our public comments speakers mentioned the Sexual Violence, Misconduct and Healthy Relationship Forum tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. And then the two events that I really did want to focus on are two student forums that our student government is hosting this Wednesday and Thursday. The first is an empathy forum centered around the ongoing conversation following the racist social media post that was posted by a Beverly student. There were a number of students and staff at the high school who were extremely offended and rightfully so. We are hosting a dialogue with individuals from all campus groups who were offended in any way, who have any input or concerns, who want to contribute to the dialogue on how we can make sure that we promote a campus culture where that kind of comment, where that kind of thinking is unacceptable. So that's something that we are extremely, you know, happy to finally be having. It's a conversation that we should have been having a while ago, and we hope to continue past this forum. Also, this Thursday, we have a forum on campus safety. I mentioned a number of ways that students are getting involved in the discussion on gun violence and campus safety. This is one of them. So this Thursday, during lunch right here in the John Cherny, we have a student forum that will be attended by Captain from the BHPD and Principal Mark Mead of the high school. And we're going to give students a brief background on where we are as a district in terms of security and safety, discuss new measures that are being looked at, that we can take to better improve their safety, and most importantly, answer questions, hear their concerns, and solicit their input. Because students need to be involved, and they have a lot to contribute and a lot to say. In addition to that, on March 14th is the National Walkout after the Parkland shootings. We are going to be participating in that. It's going to be programmed into our schedule. And so at 10:00, our students are going to walk out. We're going to likely go to the football field, have student speakers, hopefully a staff speaker as well. We're going to try and make sure that we can, you know, fight that fight and advocate for students' rights. The last thing I'd like to say is, it was meant, you know, last Friday, there was a lot of concern among high school students. 55% of the kids at the high school did not show up to school on Friday. There was the comment that our students do not want to be gated in. They don't want to be fenced in. They don't want to be in an environment where there are armed people around them. I can guarantee you, you ask those 55% of kids that didn't show up, they want a fence. They want to be safe. I can tell you, I'm part of the student government. Three weeks ago, we had a conversation on campus safety. Most of the class did not want a fence. It's inhibiting, they said. It's not aesthetic. The Monday after Parkland, we brought it up again. Every single kid in the class wanted a fence. All of them. So let's give it to them. Let's not presume for them what they want. Let's hear their voices and let's give them, give them that. So that's what our students are doing. They're active. Let's support them.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yes.
Yes.
It's in Ontario.
It's in Ontario.
Correct, Colony.
It's in Ontario. Thank you.
Swim gym.
Okay.
Yeah, it's against Flintridge Prep at Colony High School.
Okay, we're on to business and finance.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-2018-022 for the ordering an election and establishing specifications of the election order.
I'll second that.
Okay, where, do we have discussion, obviously, correct? Do we have questions? We have, we have Chris here from Keegan. Would anyone like her to come up? Any questions? No? Oh, all your questions have been answered. This is a first. This really is a Hallmark moment, Kodak moment, all the moments combined. Okay, so no more discussion? That's it? We're going to just take a vote?
Do you want to be, yeah, clarification?
Okay, well, listen, I'm giving you guys, you know, the chance. Who would like to take the ball and run?
Do you want to clarify briefly, Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
As I emphasize the word briefly.
Board of Education has on its agenda for this evening to re-up a construction bond to continue the construction program that we started. Well, I guess the district started back in 2008. We've, in the interim, have been able to complete Horace Mann with the new construction and with the new building, classroom building. And if you have an opportunity to see the abated and rehabilitated Horace Mann 1929 building, it's remarkable. That's what we want for all our 1920s buildings. We're in the process of, we finished abatement at El Rodeo. We're just waiting for those plans to come out of plan check so we can continue on. I understand that the high school, we should be starting this month, well, next month, in a few days. It will be next month in a few days, now that the abatement's completed in the 1928 building, and there'll be B1 and B2. So I can keep it short because we've actually done something with Measuring. We've built schools, we've rehabilitated schools, we've abated schools, and we need to continue on. One of the big issues that we had when we were proffering Measure Y a few years ago, is the fact that things just get more expensive. Construction was forecasted to be about 8% to 10% in cost escalation. It's now at 20% the last two years, and we're expecting a third year at 20%. So the quicker we can go ahead and conclude our construction program, the cheaper it will be for this community. This bond in particular will aggregate principal amount of $385 million to continue on. The specific projects are attached to the agenda, but if I could talk about them for just a moment. We were expecting Mr. Blake to be here to handle this. Oh, if you would, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Hacker, thank you very much. So with regard to Beverly Hills High School, our future would be B3 and B4, which is the auditorium and Salto Theater, building C and our new aquatics, outdoor aquatic center, sports field with regard to the track, to extend the track, including El Rodeo. We would have the completion future funding with regard to building E at El Rodeo, along with the, and site work and parking behind El Rodeo, which would be semi-subterranean, not like Horace Mann, but on grade. There'll be a play surface and parking below in the back, so we can not have those continued issues about where our staff parks at times. Horace Mann is complete, and Hawthorne. We are looking to rehabilitate the auditorium with regard to this bond, and that seems to be...
And the roof.
And the roof, yes.
Hawthorne, Horace Mann, I'm sorry.
Horace Mann, yes. And with regard to, yes, the auditorium at Hawthorne School. And with each of these plans, we have, part of the future funding will be the Beverly Hills High School site where the oil well is. We are decommissioning 19 wells. We do appreciate the city's contribution. They've agreed to upfront up to $8 million for this project, of which the school district has indicated that with future funding, we would pay half of that back. What's that? Oh, yeah, of course, of course. I wasn't planning on giving the highlights, but, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, President Gorbachev. Just understand, what you're proposing is a bond. And is that, how does that work in terms of the reconfiguration? Is this for the K8 model? Is this for a middle school model? Where does that fit into?
Yeah, so this bond only finishes work that we've already committed to doing, meaning finishing all of the high school except for building A, which is where Theater 40 is. People recognize that. And all of El Rodeo, which is the middle school building, the train, building E, and all the stuff around it, you know, the site stuff as well as the parking, and finishing, yeah, so, and the Hawthorne auditorium, decommissioning the oil wells. So there is no money going to Hawthorne except for the auditorium. BV, I don't really see really anything of significance going there. So that's, it doesn't in any way inhibit the reconfiguration discussion. People can still do a 712. People can still do a dedicated middle school. People can still keep a K8. We're just finishing what we started.
And this, and this will be on the ballot in June?
Yes, because we can only put them on the ballot on even years. Therefore, if we don't try for June, and we leave it all to November, and we fail, we wait two more years to try again.
And since, this is the first time I'm even hearing about it, I can imagine that there'll be many people that haven't heard about it. Will you be doing an education campaign to have people understand what this is about?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to obviously go out to all the PTAs like we did last time. We're going to put it on our website. We're going to, we're happy to come to the council if you'll let us present. We can go to all the commissions that are relevant to it and present. We can do town halls, all the above, and we are going to have to run a professional campaign.
So Mayor Bossy, I just wanted to add...
Because June is really around the corner.
So I wanted to add that one of the things that we know about this bond is that a lot of the approvals through the DSA are coming out. And so everything that has been planned for will be going into construction within the two, between two or three years after this is passed. And we have a critical window with DSA, since all the construction plans are being approved, to start construction.
And the number that you're asking for, I think you said 380?
385.
385? Is there a specific reason why it's that number as opposed to?
It's the most they're allowed by law.
It's the most they're allowed by law to request.
No. Now, Chris, can you come up?
I can respond to that.
I know, and then Chris can give the actual, it's not the most you can ask for. I just want Chris to...
It is the most you can ask for right now, yes.
The amount of $385 million is based on the actual costs of those specific projects that have been indicated. They are musts. They are important. I support this.
I would like to ask that when you do go to the PTAs, you please allow people to present, not just a timeshare sales pitch version of it, but you allow people who have differing opinions to be able to present them as well, as to maybe why this is the wrong move for the district, for the city, especially not knowing what the reconfiguration is. We hear that you're not doing anything at Hawthorne, but what happens if we keep Hawthorne? Guess what? Another bond to fix Hawthorne. So, I think that, this to me unfortunately seems not very well thought out, and it seems, it seems to be yet another time to try and treat our residents like ATMs. So, I hope that it's okay to allow other people who have differing points of view to be able to explain why there must be a plan in place ahead of time, including when it comes to reconfiguration. This is putting the cart before the horse.
So, I'm going to let, Mr. Tao, do you know the timeline for things as well as Dawn does? I think you do. So, that's a good question about Hawthorne, because the plans for Hawthorne will not be ready for several years. That's A. So, no matter what it is, it isn't ready for several years. And you can't empty out Hawthorne until El Rodeo is finished. And El Rodeo won't be completely finished for close to four to five years. So, whether Hawthorne is a middle school or a K8, it's not going to happen anyway for four to five years. That's the beginning point. So, and I'll let Terry tell you the timeline about these things, because they really are time-specific.
A lot of the projects, I've got the timeline here in front of me. A lot of these projects are actually highly dependent on when DSA is going to issue drawings. Just as a quick aside, DSA is the Division of State Architect. They're the state responsible agency with regard to the construction projects that schools must build. They actually govern not only construction for structural safety, access, fire life safety, but they also have the school districts constructing at a higher level or a higher standard than all other construction. DSA takes a really long time because of this higher level of review that occurs. And also, because of the age of your schools, some, most of your buildings go through a very large amount of review just for the granular stuff. You know, how much, how much weight can the concrete support? How much deterioration? What is, a lot of those specific requirements with regard to the structure that's already in place and the ability to withstand earthquake forces is analyzed at DSA, whereas in new construction, the analysis is actually fairly easy to pull out of the building code. Here, there's a lot more analysis, which is why the plans have taken so long. So, with regards to B1, B2, that one's going to, for the high school, that is going to start next month. And you're going to be well underway. We already have, we literally have DSA plans, but an addendum because of the conditions that we located during the asbestos abatement were located, and some structural revisions need to be, needed to be done. And those plans are actually what caused us to start in March. B3, B4 is scheduled for roughly the middle of 2020. Then for El Rodeo, those plans are not set to actually even come out until the end of this year. So, the end of 2018 is when the actual El Rodeo plans for A, B, C, and D are coming Then with, there's one other project that's also still original bond work. Horace Mann has some site and ADA requirements that need to be implemented. So, this is just original bond. So, B1, B2 at the high school, El Rodeo, A, B, C, and D, Horace Mann, building A, were original, I'm sorry, Horace Mann, site work is the original bond. The new bond, most of that work is also in DSA, and we're waiting for some of that work to come out. That includes building B3 and B4 set for twenty, the end of 2020, as I mentioned.
Terry, just to be clear, that's the Peters Auditorium.
Correct.
Okay.
Then building C, which is set for commencement sometime at the end of 2021, beginning of 2022.
That replaces Conheim.
And then for El Rodeo, building E is set to come out and start construction in the second quarter of 2021. And for the rest of the projects, those would be in planning with expectation of DSA approvals. So, for example, when you discuss reconfiguration, much of the work that we're talking about now, and some of it which is required, some of which we're asking for from the bond, is actually tied to buildings that are actually now being not in, not in operation, such as some of the auditoriums. Projects that are actually in DSA, such as El Rodeo, that we're waiting for. Projects such as high school buildings. And then, of course, we're adding to that the shut-in of the oil wells, which is the main reason why I'm here. And then the security is being added. That was actually one of the line items that was added beyond security that's already part of the projects, also added into the, to the bond, because that wasn't planned for in the original bond, except for whatever it is that was going to go into the buildings.
Terry, there are two factors in the oil well, though, that we need to be clear about. There's the shared cost with the current city plan to cap and fill the wells. And then there's a remediation plan, which is not part of our agreement with the city, to return the field back to its original state.
That is...
And those are both in this bond.
Those are both in the bond. An estimated number was put in to handle both the reimbursement portion on the agreement with the city, as well as to take the rest of the facilities down so that they could be used for other purposes. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Spitz.
I would just like to try to clarify a question or comment that John made. Please understand that these particular, these specific projects, they neither conflict with, nor do they affect reconfiguration. These are projects that need to be done. And there is no decision on reconfiguration that this board has made, but these projects need to be done. Will there be future, a future bond? Absolutely, there will be a future bond, because Hawthorne isn't being touched outside of, outside of reopening the auditorium. That's the point.
Mrs. Gorbachev, I actually have a question for Chris. Chris, I had a question, because it's a little different this time. Since the projects are going to be built very quickly in the next two or three years after the passing, my question is, how many series? Have you, have you been presented with a schedule for series for sales of the bonds?
Yeah, we spoke, we had a conference call on Friday, I believe, with Dawn, and he gave just an estimated timeline of when they would need, when you guys would need...
You tell me a little bit about that, please.
Sure.
Because I want to understand...
So, it was a timeline of when money had to come out?
Yeah, when funds were needed from the 385.
To go to construction, sure.
Right, so, I understood that the first 50 million would be needed in February or so, first quarter of 2019, and then approximately 140 in 2021.
How much, I'm sorry?
140, 140 million.
When?
2021. Another 140 in 2023, and the remainder 55 million in 2025. But, of course, these are estimates, and we are able to change the amount of proceeds and the timing as necessary as we, as the bond is approved and funds are needed.
And what is the tax rate on that?
$44 per 100,000.
So, do you anticipate it staying at 44 for this new measure?
It's typically below, actually, because we build on a number of conservative measures. So, for instance, we're assuming 4% assessed value growth every year moving forward. Your historical growth is well over 6%. And last year was nine. So, should be below 44, but that's the number we're going forward with.
Okay, good. I don't think that piece of information was given to us at the study session, so I'm glad that you have that information and that we've made that known to the voter. Thank you.
And Chris, one more thing before you leave. Is there a maximum on Prop. 39?
The maximum is only the tax rate you can ask for, which is $60 per 100,000. So, you're actually going out for 44 per 100,000, so you're definitely not at the maximum. At $60, you could easily go over 500 million, so you're well below that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anything else you want to tell us that you, on the conference call, anything or you feel you pretty much covered it?
Yeah, I think we've covered it. You know, the costs are looking well below the caps that the state imposes, so this is a very healthy bond, only current interest bonds, no capital appreciation bonds.
No caps.
No caps.
Thank goodness.
Conservative interest rate assumptions, conservative assessed value assumptions. Overall, a very conservative bond measure.
Okay. Any other comments?
Let's get a roll call.
Okay, roll call, please. I think it's important enough.
Mr. Arctel?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Breger?
Yes.
It's still me.
Mrs. Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
One other thing that Bond Council told us, and I, Dr. Brege, you weren't on the phone, you were in Illinois. They are now allowing school districts to pick two letters. So, every bond, they'll put out like five or six letters, and those are the ones you get to choose from. But they will make an exception if you want to pick two letters. So, he said, "Well, the obvious ones are BH." So, you could have a bond BH. So, I just wanted to put that out there. And the Bond Council will be giving us timelines to, you know, do all that, the nuts and bolts. Okay?
Thank you. It can also be "it" for infrastructure and technology.
It?
Reminds me of the Addams Family.
So, people say, "Are you voting for it?"
Right. "Voting for it?" That's cute.
Okay, can I make a motion for the approval of the contract with the City of Beverly Hills, ARB and BHUSD?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Spitz. Any discussion?
I'd like to thank the city for partnering with us and ARB in getting this oil well remediated.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. The city has been, you know, helpful and kept us informed, we've kept them informed. It's been a very fruitful, successful partnership. So, thank you. Thank you to the two council members sitting here. Thank you to all the rest of you and all your staff. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
I echo those sentiments. Mrs. Gorbachev, thank you.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any dissents? No. Okay, another one that passes.
Okay, we need to, item 13C, we moved to table it.
We moved it away.
Dr. Brege, we are tabling this until, do we have an answer or?
We're looking forward to moving it to the next scheduled board meeting.
March 13th, Dr. Brege?
Correct.
Okay, so, move to table Davis demographic presentation to the March 13th meeting.
Thank you. 13D?
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mr. Goldstein. 13D, Dr. Brege, rejection of claim?
It's just a claim from a parent for damages, and it's been recommended from our attorneys that this claim be rejected at this point.
I move to reject claim number 550266. Did I say that right? 55.
550255, Mr. Spitz.
I think you were close.
I didn't have my glasses on.
But you did very well, because without mine, I wouldn't have gotten any of that right. So, you're doing well.
I'll second the rejection of claim 550255.
Okay, fourth by Mr. Spitz, seconded by Mr. Margot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 14A, board policies. Second reading and approval of new board policy. Right?
Make a motion to approve the new board policy, 3513.4, drug and alcohol-free schools.
Does it move? Any discussion? Do we have to read this, Dr. Brege? I don't think so.
No, this is just, this is new policy recommended by CSBA, and this is just, it's a very general but standard policy about alcohol and, you know, not being in possession on school property.
So, it only deals with alcohol, correct? And, well, drugs?
Drugs, sale.
That includes vaping?
Yes.
Right? I think so. That's drug.
Yeah, it's a new policy based on Proposition 64, which passed, which prohibits any person from possessing, smoking, or ingesting cannabis on school grounds while children are present.
Okay, that is vaping. All righty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, who made the motion? Mr. Margot made the motion, and you seconded, Mr. Goldstein?
No, it was Mrs. Hacker.
Mrs. Hacker seconded. Thank you. Okay, communications from the board members. Number 15.
I have none. I'd just like to encourage everyone to come to the Spring Musical, starting March 2nd.
I'd like to just make a quick comment about the motion that we passed today to have a construction bond measure of $385 million and have it on the June 5th ballot. I can understand how, having heard this for the first time, it's a shocker, and I can understand the concerns. But I hope that you realize that we've been working on this for quite a, quite a long time. And we have even had open public meetings.
Study sessions.
Study sessions where nobody attended. But, but it's something that we've been working on, and I can just personally assure you that every project in there is needed and needed urgently. And I'm very careful about supporting these kinds of issues. I can tell you this, it's not a blank check, and I favor it.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
I want to congratulate Jonathan, your National Merit Scholar, very good. Congratulations to you and to three other students, correct? And thank you for representing Beverly Hills High School so well. Are you happy? It's quite an accomplishment. I feel very lucky to know you. That's pretty amazing. And to your mommy, who's, your mother, who's in the audience, congratulations to you, Mrs. Arctel and Mr. Arctel at home, who is watching, I'm sure. And I also want to congratulate your alma mater, Hawthorne School, for being a school to watch. Yes, it's pretty amazing, and I'm looking forward to attending the awards recognition ceremony on Thursday? It's Thursday, just one day, right? Because I'm flying and coming back the same day. And just thank you to our city council for your support, your continuing support for being here. I know that you care about our district. I'm convinced of that. And to Chief Spignoli and her officers who have left now, but I really appreciate them coming out and being with us tonight. And to all the parents who continue to come out and voice your opinions and your thoughts. You know, I think we share a common vision to make sure that our schools are safe and secure. And it is a frustrating situation, because I know parents want answers like yesterday, and we're not, we're not at yesterday. We're here, and we're trying to give you clear answers. So, please know that this is a priority for this board, and I think everyone in this, on the school board is dedicated to making sure that our schools are more secure and more safe. Thank you.
I'm going to echo the... Um, I'm gonna echo the musical again, Jonathan, selfishly. There are four amazing seniors that will be graduating and leaving the program. Um, and it, everybody should absolutely see these kids in action on stage. It's, it's a great way to have like a night on Broadway without having to put up with the Hollywood pantagious traffic. So I encourage everybody to come out.
What a difference a decade makes. Approximately ten years ago, when we would have city council members in the chamber, although I wasn't on the board, these discussions didn't go like this. They're civil, they're productive, they're partnerships. I don't think we had that ten years ago as a community. And I think Mayor Bossi and, uh, Councilmember Merrish, even though we may disagree on a, a few things over the years, the support from the council is always there. And tonight was just another example of how there can be partnerships. And when we hear, actually hear each other and listen and not yell and scream at each other, there were times board members would go to the council and all you hear was yelling, screaming at each other. So I, I think this, this point in time, this council, this board has made a markedly, um, great leap in cooperation. Just the fact that we hammered out that JPA and a lot of it had to do with security issues and cameras in the schools. And that took some time. So the reason I bring that up is I know there's a sense of community that wants to see something happen yesterday. But doing something yesterday or, or tomorrow won't get it done. It'll just provide the warm, fuzzy safety, it won't provide real security. And that's important to understand. Superintendent Bregge, since he's been back the last few days, has been on this. And, uh, I have a child here at the high school and I, I heard about that drill. And it was interesting, 'cause we know as a board, we gave direction just a few months ago to get those fixed. And they were fixed and now they're broken again. So this is why we need a bond. These are the things we need to fix in this community, uh, school community. These are the things, the disconnects, that it does take money. Somebody said, "You throw money at a problem." Well, this is one of those things that it does take money to fix and that's what we're trying to do. In November twenty sixteen, Measure Y received sixty-four percent of the vote. It required, because there were only three board members, uh, to, uh, sixty-six point seven percent. This bond will require fifty-five percent of the vote. A question was asked, "How are we gonna run a bond in just a few months? June is around the corner." Well, we ran that bond in five weeks. We went out, 'cause it was out, you know, after the high holidays, we, we started to proffer that bond. Sixty-four percent of this voting community voted and supported our schools. There was over eighty-four hundred voters. I think, I think more voters than elected any one of us or any city council member. This community supports our schools and our school community. And I believe they'll do so again. And Mr. Spitz is correct. Measure Y, although we wanted to continue on our construction program, it was a, um, interesting time. We knew things were getting more expensive. If you look around, all the other bonds that passed back in November twenty sixteen, every one passed, but, but this community's bond. What that, how that affected us is that everyone else is out there, um, locking up contractors, materials, everything gets more expensive. Beverly Hills is somewhat landlocked, people have to come great distances. It costs us more money to construct. The quicker we can get our construction program finished, the better it will be, the cheaper it will be for the community, so we won't be in ATM, 'cause it will cost this community more money the longer it takes us. And most importantly, we'll get those kids and students and staff out of those bungalows earlier. We don't ever wanna see a situation that occurred in Beverly Vista where students and staff stayed in bungalows for twelve years. That's what we're trying to avoid here.
Thank you. I just wanna say tonight was remarkable, because, um, it's, I can't imagine a more heated topic than security and people's children. And I think that it was entirely fruitful, polite, civilized, respectful. And we disagree, some of us with others, but it's all from a good place. I think we all want what's best. I think it's remarkable, again, that all five of us or six of us support the bond. That's a first. That's a, that's a first in my world. And I wanna say that I have enormous confidence, um, that with the help of community members and council members and mayors and former mayors, we will pass this bond with fifty-five percent. I, I was awestruck at how eighty-five hundred residents voted to tax themselves. Now you know, many of them didn't have kids here anymore. Many of them didn't even have grandkids in our schools, but they stepped up. They see the condition of these buildings, they understand what twenty-first century learning is. They understand what this does to the community. Great schools build great neighborhoods, create great cities. It's just a fact, it's not anecdotal, it's empirical, but we know it 'cause we walk it, we live it. And I, I have to say that I'm excited to work with, what I'm looking at right now, Mayor Bossi, I'm excited to work with all of you. I hope it'll be a joyous thing, it'll be like a rose float. I hope we're all gonna come together and put little petals on it and build the best bond campaign we can and, and hit the streets. And I hope our teachers will help us and our administrators. And it can be really a, a rallying cry for us to say, "We are the future, we're going forward and we're building the future, because our kids deserve the best. Our community, our JPA deserves the best." I'm excited to be a part of this one more time, only this time I'm really glad it's at fifty-five and not sixty-six point six-seven. But Howard and I and, and others worked so hard for five or six weeks and we learned a lot. We learned about how to run a campaign tight and fast and hard, and we did it. And I don't wanna do it again in five or six weeks, but we can do it. We could do it in eight or ten, all day long. So, um, with that, I wanna thank the council members for being here. I wanna thank the chief and her, um, her, her police force for being here. I wanna thank the city manager for being here. I wanna thank the public for being here. I wanna thank, um, Mayor Bossi and John Merrish for sitting through it till the very end, as well as the others. And I wanna say to the board, this was really a remarkable evening and we really should be proud of it, because we all agree on a bond. That means we all agree on the future.
And thanks to KBEV.
Always thanks to KBEV and Romeo Carey and all the wonderful kids. Okay, and thank you to our staff for being here. Thank you.